We'll call this meeting to order. Oh, yes, oh, yes. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Sumner County is now in session pursuant to a adjournment. Anyone wishing to speak to an item on the agenda may sign up now. God bless this country and this honorable board. Thank you, Mr. Piguer. Tonight, our pastor is Reverend Sean Stanfield, the pastor of Rehoboth United Methodist Church, 2601 Cages Ben Road, Gallatin, Tennessee. He holds a Bachelor of Arts degree from Tennessee State University in Professional Studies with a focus on business, a Master of Arts in Religion, a Master's of Religious Education, and MDiv in Pastoral Leadership, and has completed the United Methodist Church Course of Study through Emory University. He's served in appointments in various churches in Georgia and Tennessee. He and his wife, Robyn, have three children and reside in Hendersonville. Before I turn it over to him, I'd ask for specific prayer for the Farmer family. Ms. Farmer taught elementary school at Oakmont for many, many years and was killed in a car accident over fall break. With her, her children are okay. They were with her in the car, but please keep the Farmer family in your prayers. And we also want to keep Denise and Billy Gemenin in our prayers tonight.
Let's pray. Lord God, as we come to you tonight, we thank you for this evening to come and celebrate you through conversation and business. God, we thank you for the faithful efforts of every man and woman in here who are going about the business of this great county of Sumner County. God, we also come to you and we pray that your grace and peace would abound in this room, but also with the two families that were mentioned. Heartbreaking loss, but we know that your sovereign and your grace is sufficient. God, we thank you and we pray that you would give us wisdom and discernment as we talk not just about the business of this county, but about the hopes and the dreams. And most of all, Lord God, we pray that you, we make your name famous. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join in the praise for our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's check our, let's check the roll.
Roll calls now open. Each commissioner, please record your presence.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kemp. We have an amended agenda. I'll ask for approval in just a second, but let me explain a little bit of the backdrop of what happened with our amended agenda that was sent out. In September, we passed in General Ops an overview of the court process, of the court, excuse me, the courthouse project. If you remember, we did this, those of you that were on the last commission, if you remember, we did the same thing with the school bond proposal where we, where the entire project was laid out, we voted on it, and then each individual project came before the commission and was deliberated upon and approved. The same is the, is the strategy here. General Ops has been between the subcommittee and then the General Ops Committee, they've been working on this for about three years. And we have JPA here tonight. They're going to lay out the full project for us again, and will vote on the project. It's not cash, it's not connected to the money of the county. It's simply approving the overall project itself. There are some items on that that are under the budget agenda tonight, or excuse me, the budget resolutions tonight that Mr. Taylor will explain when we get to budget. But that's basically with, the General Ops Committee was canceled in October. And to be honest, Ms. Dinnan and I missed it when we were working on the agenda, and as soon as we discovered it, we amended the agenda to get it on there. One other addition that I would like to add without objection is the governor, through Mr. Holt, has asked us to add, the resolution is on your desk. It's called a resolution proclaiming October 23, 2019, as Imagine a Day Without Water Day. The governor's asked for every county commission to pass this. You know, I don't think we want a day without water, definitely not more than three, but we'll start with that, that resolution is on there without objection, we'll, we'll add that, okay, to amended. Mr. Mansfield?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just had a, just a point of information. You kind of clarified a little bit, but I went back and listened to the September budget meeting, and it was stated that a second reading would be required for this. Does this meeting count as a second reading, or is that referring to a, like going to a committee meeting?
Second, a second reading is a budget practice started under Mr. Palmerway in the last commission for budgetary items. This, this resolution that came through General Ops does not have any financial implications for the county. It's an approval of the overview of the process. Each part that's funded will have to come back before the commission. Like, for instance, tonight, the jail pods are on there to be voted on, and that will go through the regular budgetary process.
But it was unanimous, so it doesn't...
And it was, and also when bud-
It wasn't unanimous in budget. There was a no vote.
Neither General Ops nor budget was unanimous.
Okay. General Ops does not require two readings, and there are no budget implications. So interpretation of the chairs, we do not need a second reading for that.
So just for further clarification, the appropriations we're doing aren't a part of the overall plan?
The individual appropriations will be hand, like, let me back up. Like, in 2015, when we approved the school bond resolutions, about 75 million, somewhere in that ballpark, what we passed first was an overview of where all the money was going, if approved, so that everyone would know exactly where the money was going, what it was for. Because the concern was, is that obviously with commissioners representing diverse parts of the county, that you would want to make sure that your schools were represented in some capacity. So my understanding from Michelle, and she can certainly jump in to help if she needs to, my understanding was, is that we wanted everyone, because we've been talking about this for a couple of years, and we've kind of been, you know, it's been discussed prior to actually the judicial committee that looked at this and studied before we brought JPA on, we had tried a number of other ways to fix and repair the courthouse. I remember our first year, I think we spent around a half million dollars, something close to that, on asbestos abatement and some other renovations, and then found out later that really what we needed to do was step back, look at everything, and come up with an overall plan. So my understanding is, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, is that what we're doing is, is laying out, because this is a big project with a lot of moving parts, laying the entire project out for everyone to see, voting on that, but the financial implications don't come into play until we actually vote on the individual parts. For instance, I mean, we could, in theory, I guess, approve the money, but we don't have the bond or any kind of capacity to pay it right now. That would be a completely separate process. So the only parts that will be considered tonight that have financial implications connected to the judicial process or to the judicial project is 1910-04 and 1910-05 that deals with jail modules and the 6.7 million Mr. Taylor, Commissioner Chris Taylor can speak to for the new Justice Center. Those are the two parts that have been through budget. Those are the two parts that require immediate financial action tonight. The rest is the project as a whole, but there's no, like, if we vote to approve the whole thing and then reject any part, then the part's rejected, if that makes sense.
So just to clarify, when it was stated that this would go through a second reading from, in budget, what, that wasn't talking about these two items? It was just talking about the General Ops portion that doesn't-
The General Ops portion does not require a budgetary reading because it doesn't have financial implications.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just confused about, when I went back and listened to the audio about-
Right. I don't know, I haven't heard, I'd have to, my guess is if it was stated that way, it's a misstatement because it wouldn't require that.
So it does not require a second reading in that case, even though there wasn't, was not a unanimous vote?
Right.
It does not need that.
Right, because there's no financial implications.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it requires a unanimous vote. If you remember, the example that I could think of is when we, last year, when we approved the SROs, I think we ended up approving one in budget because we could get a unanimous vote to move it to the floor, and then it was amended on the floor. But we, this was previous budget year. But yeah, readings, either in budget, require a unanimous vote or two readings. Of course, that's a practice of the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee can also vote to, to set aside that rule if necessary. We've done that, I think, maybe once. No, that's not what I said, because this comes out of General Ops, not budget. Commissioner Taylor?
To echo on that, then, on another item on the agenda, the two items that do have financial implications were not passed unanimously in budget in September, and they were not voted on in October at the Budget Committee meeting. The vote was six to one. The vote was six to one, and I can tell you which commissioner voted no, if you'd like for me to. And it was stated at the end of that meeting that it would go before the Budget Committee for a second reading, because it was not unanimous.
Commissioner Taylor?
I'll defer to Mr. Law in case I misspeak on anything like this. When we initially did it, we did it September with the idea that we might want to try and push it forward. And we said at budget then, that regardless of the unanimous or not, it would have to go through in October because we couldn't have JPA come in time. I believe it was then put on old business in October. We already had the vote, and it was just passed along. If I'm mistaken, David can correct me on it, but we've already done what we need to do as far as budget goes for it to go forward. If we hadn't, it wouldn't be on the agenda tonight.
But I believe it's-
Hang on, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Law.
I believe it's a two-thirds vote or two readings. But that's what I'm trying to make sure that I'm telling you correctly, but I'll look at that right now. We just, I'm just trying to locate the actual resolution.
Okay, while we're waiting, are there any other additions to the agenda for the evening? What's that? Mr. Law is pulling it up since his budget. What was the, what was the vote in budget? Do we know? Six to one? That's over a two-thirds vote, so either way, it moves on. So, let's vote on the, let's vote on the agenda. All in favor say, oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, got an abstention from Commissioner Mansfield and a no from Commissioner Taylor. Mr. Taylor, what's your objection? Okay, which rule are you objecting to? Okay. Does anyone want to second Mr. Taylor's objection? Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. All right, most, agenda's been approved. We'll move on to our minutes. Is there a motion to approve our minutes? Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Echols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, let's see. I think, yeah, I want to do a couple of things without objection. I want to move the certificates up to before public comments, and I'd also like to recognize JPA first because they may answer some questions for people or may raise some other questions before people come up for their public comments. I think that would be the best course in terms of getting the best, most thorough public comments. So without objection, we're going to jump down. Your veteran service report is attached, and we have a certificate of recognition honoring Sumner County, and Commissioner Terry Wright's coming up to present that. Mr. Wright? I believe we have a video.
Yes. First off, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Could I get all my guys and girls to stand up for me back there in the back? Ladies and gentlemen, if you have a child that goes to public school in Sumner County, those folks standing up back there and the ones that are up here with me right now are the ones who make sure they have a safe learning environment. I think they need another round of applause. And if you can't tell, I'm a little biased with them. This is Deputy Chris Vines. He's going to play a couple of videos for you. I'm going to turn it over to him right now.
Real quick, before we do the videos, I just want to take a moment. What this is is about our Champ Camp. Yes, we are responsible with making sure that our kiddos in Sumner County are safe while they are learning in our schools, but we go a little further than just safety. That is our number one priority. However, we also like to teach our kiddos. We like to make sure that, that we send them on to the next grade or the next level of life with some kind of knowledge from a police officer that not only are we here to bridge those gaps between today's youth and law enforcement, that we're here for them to, to make sure that they are successful, not only in their school life, but as well as in their, their future adult life as well. And, and one of the ways that we do that is through a summer camp that we at the Sheriff's Office provide to approximately 200 students in our county each year, which has grown exponentially from year to year to year, and has also grown in popularity. So I have one quick news clip from Channel 4 that they did on our camp last year at Rucker Stewart Middle School, and then Deputy Nelson, who's actually going to take over the videos here, he actually is our audio and our video guy during camp, and he put together a little quick video for what we did up in Portland. That way you guys-
That worries me that he's in charge of that, by the way.
He's the best I have. So Cliff, you go. And I hope the audio works.
Fall fishing, hiking, all that, sound like fun? The Sumner County Sheriff's Department is bridging the gap with area children through their summer Champ Camp. Well, I checked out this free week of fun that focuses on strengthening relationships between these deputies and the people they serve.
We work with these kids every day, and we want to, to make sure we have a relationship with them, that they trust us, and that they can come to us, that we're there for them.
Champ Camp Director right there, Deputy Chris Vine, says the day starts with free breakfast and face time with all of Sumner County's 32 school resource officers. The children spend all week with these SROs, learning everything from archery to frisbee, can jam, and more. They even have a classroom course from the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security. Now, the takeaway for these kids, listen to this.
Hopefully, we've, we've helped create some leaders that will be able to go back into the schools and teach the things that we've taught them to their friends.
More than 200 children are attending the two Champ Camps in Sumner County. And parents, listen up, we are working for you. I did some digging and found lots of free camps offered by area law enforcement, including Davidson, Wilson, Rutherford, Overton Counties, and more. We've added the contact information for those camps on our website, so go there, check it out, wsnv.com. Pretty cool, Chris.
Plenty of things to get involved in this summer, and a lot of them are free.
Yes, they are free.
That's awesome.
And that's a quick insight to what we do each year for Champ Camp, and is if you see there when we rolled the credits there at the end for, for our thank you to our sponsors and our donors, the one that's on the very top is the Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition. That's because for the last four years, they have partnered with us, and they have been an absolute tremendous help, not only financially, but as well as logistically, when it comes to the day-to-day operations and planning of camp and ordering the little things like swag for the kiddos, because each kid gets two t-shirts, they get a bag, they get a water bottle, they get sunglasses, there's all kinds of little intricate things that go into this, and they're usually the ones that pick up that, that, that burden for us at the Sheriff's Office and take care of a lot of that stuff for us. So I would like to invite Kit Senyard and Megan Griffith with the Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition to come up forward, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, this year was my second year having the privilege of helping with this Champ Camp. I never realized how important it was to have something like this for the children in this county. And without these folks here, it would not be possible. So we have a resolution here for y'all, and I'm going to read it real quick. Whereas Sumner County Office Champ Camp, which stands for Character, Honesty, Attitude, Motivation, Positivity, Camp is a week-long summer program for those students moving into the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, and who have also shown a positive attitude and willingness to work with other students throughout the year. And whereas the Champ Camp is staffed by SROs who strive to bridge the gap between youth and law enforcement and teach students preventive measures and life skills, which they can use at their homes or schools, and the Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition has been greatly instrumental in supporting this very important cause. Whereas the Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition has provided many valuable resources for the last three years and enabled school resource officers to form positive relationships with countless students since the camp's inception, pardon me, in 2017. Therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 21st day of October 2019, and that this body hereby recognizes and celebrates the Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition for its contribution to make the Champ Camp the great success that it is today. And be it further resolved, this resolution spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy to y'all. Thank you.
So moved by Mr. Wright, second by a bunch. All in favor say aye. Mr.? Motion passes unanimously.
And thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I think we want to, we want to celebrate the fact that so many kids not only had a wonderful camp experience, but got a, got to experience, you know what, those of us that work in the schools see every day, which is the fact that our, our SROs exhibit those Champ values every day, and we're very appreciative of the hard work that they do and the commitment that they make to our, our children and our communities every day. So I know we're honoring the drug task force, but we also want to give a round of applause and honor our SROs as well. Commissioner Wright, I have to say, I had a nervous moment, though, when you, you announced that Officer Nelson was going to be in charge of the video. You know, he, he one time made a, one time made about a four-minute remix video of me after I tore my Achilles. I had this terrible accident where I fell in the middle of the cafeteria off my knee scooter, and he sent it to Free Falling by Tom Petty and had quite a, quite a video. He could probably pull that up if you needed him to. I was kind of shocked that a little bit of that didn't make it into the end there. That's right, that's right. That'll be on the Facebook version. All right, our next resolution is, Mr. Holt, did you want, you want us just to present it from the floor or you want to come up and do it?
Just pass it.
Okay, all right. Imagine a Day Without Water from Governor Bill Lee. The resolution is on your desk. Motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. We've confirmed that everybody's in favor of water. All right, consent agenda items are before you. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Echols, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, hang on, I'm sorry, Mr. Mansfield, I couldn't see. Go ahead, Mr. Mansfield.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a parliamentary inquiry.
Yes, sir.
I have a copy of our standing rules and procedures.
Uh huh.
And we're just looking through it about how things get approved. I just want to make a clarification. What our rules talk about is on commission readings, not committee readings, that a, it's by a two-thirds majority vote of the commission, on the first reading shall waive the requirement of a second reading, but does not mention committee meetings. It's just for the main body. So how is that, is, do the committee meetings come up under that, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes unanimously. All right, your written reports are on your desk, but let's back up because I ran past public comments and JPA's presentation. So I'm going to yield the floor with that objection to JPA, who's going to share with us a presentation about the courthouse project, Judicial Center project. Judicial Center project.
I guess I could fill the time while he's trying to pull this up by just saying hello again. We're glad to be here. It's always a pleasure to be here with you. A lot of what I'm going to say tonight is very similar to what we presented last time, so you'll see some of the same tables in there. I would like to take you back a little bit in time because we started this process with you two and a half years ago. And I'd like to express a little bit of what led us to the point where we were proposing a new courthouse and then walk you through where we are in the process today. I'll start with the first slide, which shows you the resident population. And you can see the numbers in your report that you grew by around 95,000 between 1980 and 2017, and you're projected to grow by about another 90,000 between 2017 and 2050. And 2050 was our target date to do forecasting. You can see the growth line as a graph over on the right side. And the implications of this for your court system are significant. Case load typically grows even in the absence of population growth. When you add population growth, there are far more permutations of things with people interacting within a given space and within a given time, and your caseload grows even faster. So you're looking at substantial caseload growth, you're looking at substantial growth in number of judges, you're looking at substantial growth in staff as a consequence of your population growth. And there's really no way to slow it down. You're a bedroom community to a major metropolitan area, and you will continue to grow over time. Moving to the next slide, we started to look at your existing facilities. And what we found was that you were very fragmented. It's not uncommon to have the public defender in a separate building. It's not uncommon to have the district attorney general in a separate building. It is uncommon to have your courts separated into three different buildings. That causes a host of problems. From a public convenience standpoint, that's one of the obvious ones with people going to the wrong facilities, but that's just the tip of the iceberg. You have security issues. You're now trying to staff security in three separate buildings, and the operating cost for that is significant. None of those buildings actually is secure, and that's another problem. Another issue that you have is that your judges can't actually share caseloads very effectively. For instance, if one of your civil judges happened to have your circuit judges who handle civil cases or chancery cases, happened to have some extra time on his calendar, there is no easy way for him to hear criminal cases, even if the criminal judges are running till very late in the day and can't handle all of their cases. Once you put your judges together, once you consolidate them in a building, you're able to share resources. Your clerk's office is divided. Jurys are divided among more than one facility. It essentially is such a fragmented system that it is not functioning effectively. And this is something we've seen across the country when facilities are as fragmented as they are in this county. The next slide starts to show you a little bit about what we found when we looked at the space and operations in your various buildings. The red and orange that you see here, we call red, in some cases you'll see actual scores of one on a 10-point scale. You get a one if you have a roof and four walls. We can't give lower than a one in that scoring system. You have ones in this county. You also have twos in this county. Those are just fundamentally inappropriate for continued operation. They're unsafe, they don't work well, they don't serve the public well. You have threes, which run into the inadequate category, which means fix it as soon as you can fix it. You have some marginals, which are yellow, and that's about as good as it gets. The only thing you had that was not fundamentally inappropriate, inadequate, or marginal were your public defender space, which is very small, and your county probation space, which is very small. So those are your facilities, a sea of red and orange, essentially. The jail wasn't bad, incidentally. We gave the jail a 5.9, which is a six, and felt that if we could just give the jail a little bit of short-term relief, particularly for the adult females, which in turn would enable us to give the juveniles a little bit of relief, we could buy you some time with your jail. Your jail is really not in terrible shape. Well, it shouldn't be. It's a pretty new jail. But that's what your system looked like. Moving to the next slide, we started to look at what you needed. And we came up with a new courthouse. There are a couple of things I'd like to tell you about that new courthouse, just from an operational standpoint. Not only are we consolidating all of your courts, we're creating a much safer environment for the courts to transact their business. A much safer environment for the public to come into, for jurors to come into, for families to come into. We're also creating a facility that can last to approximately the turn of the century. And I mean that sincerely, that if your facility opens in, let's say, late 2022, first quarter of 2023, and it's somewhere in that range, you've got about 80 years' worth of growth in that building through partly the creation of a shelf floor, which will be unfinished when you move in, but which will give you an additional four courtrooms in the future. So you will not have another problem of your courts scattered around the county as you've had in the past. This is sort of a long-term capital plan. You have copies in front of you that may be easier to read. But the court facility itself is about a $78 million facility. You've already appropriated $5.7 million in professional fees, and those fees have been going toward the design of the court facilities, the design of the jail pod, et cetera. Then we've got a jail pod housing addition. Now, if you'll recall, that has grown. We started off in our original Phase 1 capital plan, which was developed at the end of 2017 and the first quarter of 2018 with a $2 million single pod. We were going to accommodate as many beds as we could within that single pod, somewhere between 48 and 64, but that at the time was all that we felt we could recommend to you. As we got deeper into it, the jail population continued to grow, we decided that we needed to double that. Double the number of inmates and double the cost as well, but we're also providing for some long-term flexibility. So the two pods, and I'll show you a sketch later, enable you to house 128 inmates initially, and we're going to recommend minimum to medium-security adult female. And then long-term, we can double that to 256. So it gives you really a great deal of additional flexibility. That gives you about a 25% or 30% increase in your total bed space capacity at a pretty reasonable cost. And then longer term, we have still another plan for the jail that I'll go into a bit later. As we move on down the page, you'll see project management, construction management fees through 2022. So that's the end of this Phase 1 period. You'll see transition space for the juvenile court and county probation. When you swapped space with the church and you bought the space that the youth ministries building currently sits on, we obligated ourselves to move out of the county probation building and to move out of the juvenile court building. So we're creating transition space to put those courts in temporarily until the new courthouse can be built. Because in order to build the new courthouse, we have to tear down the youth ministries building. Well, unfortunately, the church had spent about $600,000 renovating that building to make it work for them. They're going to need to go do the same thing with the juvenile court building. They can't just move in where there are two courtrooms and a bunch of offices and operate their youth ministries out of there. So we're going to have to get out of that building before we tear down the youth ministries building on the new site for the courthouse. All this has been carefully planned and thought out, and you have a schedule that shows the staging of this and how all this works that I'll get to in a few minutes. But all of the costs for that have been covered in here. The initial security deposit, the outfit costs for the space to convert it to juvenile court and probation use, the lease costs for each year, and of course, then the demolition of the county probation building. And we'll have to abate some hazardous material in that building before we tear it down and then tear it down. So all those, you can see, total about 1.3 million. Then we talked to you last time about the parking garage. The parking garage is going to accommodate approximately 450 spaces. We don't know an exact number yet. We have an early design, but it's going to depend on whether we build a five-story garage, a five-and-a-half-story garage, or a six-story garage. It seems to me, seems to us, as we look at it, that the site is going to lend itself to about five-and-a-half stories. Possibly, we'll do six full stories. So there's a variation there in the number of spaces. We kind of took the middle of that range. We'd like to budget 450 spaces at $20,000 a space. That's $9 million. The design fees for that would be $450,000, so that's the 9.4 million. Add the total of everything under new related projects and expenses to the earlier project number of 77.7 million, and you come up with $89 million. We'd like to put in an additional $2 million as an owner's contingency to protect you because you have three projects now that you're building. You have the $72 million courthouse, so that's the fees. You have the $5 million jail pod, and then you have the roughly $9.5 million garage. So we think it's prudent to add in about a $2 million owner's contingency. So the total project that you would be approving in principle, I understand that the actual funds would not be appropriated now because, A, you can't spend them all right now, and B, you have no source to spend them with now. You'll spend this money over a period of several years, would be $91 million. So that gives you an overview of that part. I'd like to go into a little more detail of how some of this actually happens and when it happens. If you look at the next page, and it's hard to read these. Last time, you'll recall, we passed out a much larger version of the schedule. I think it was 13 by 18. It's much easier to read on a large size. But this is the crucial deadline. We're trying to get you into a new courthouse either in the last quarter of 2022 or perhaps the first quarter of 2023. We're doing our best to nail that down, but we'll know more as we get into the actual construction process. Well, everything works backwards from that. You have dominos that have to fall at certain points in order to meet deadlines for people to move out of things, for people to move into things, for the church to have its facility available to them, to start on-site work for the new courthouse. We'll actually advance the construction of the parking garage. We're gonna try to start that as soon as we can, quite frankly. We're going, the design process hasn't really started. The architects have given us some early concepts, but they don't even have any fee to do that yet. And part of what I think is going to be asked to approve tonight is fees for the architects to design the parking garage. And we need that because in order to make these deadlines, they have to start their work in a more formal way. We're also going to try to start construction of the jail pod as early as January. Well, to do that, we have to finish our design, and then we have to really hit the ground running with construction. So some of these are very short timeframes. We also have the move-in to transition space, and some of that funding is going to be requested tonight. If we miss some of these deadlines, we miss these deadlines. If we miss these deadlines, inflation will eat up some of your budget. So these deadlines are critical, not just because you want to get into a new courthouse. They're critical because the church has to get into its property. They're critical because our budget is dependent on hitting certain milestones at certain times to avoid the effects of escalation. The longer we wait, the more it costs. I'll be glad to answer questions on any of this later, but with your permission, I'm gonna move on to a little different way to show you how all this happens. I think it's easier to see some of this stuff if we look at it this way. Our final goal is to have a new courthouse located in this location with the library right here and your historic courthouse right here. Over here is the juvenile court building and the probation building behind it. Here is the First Baptist Church of Gallatin, right here. We want to build a parking deck back here behind the library. You own most of this space, not all of it. So this is our final goal. How do we get there? Well, if you go to the next slide, the very first thing that we've got to do to get there is to relocate the juvenile court and probation. We've got to put them in some space so that we can tear down the probation building and so the church can come in and start doing their outfit of the juvenile court building. So this is the second step. We've relocated things. Now we tear down the probation building. We're doing that in the May to June portion of 2020. Meanwhile, the church already has parking here. They already have parking here. They already have some parking here, but they're going to expand their parking. They've acquired property that extends all the way over to here, so they bought this property back here. They're gaining this property, so they're going to put parking here, here, and they're also going to put parking here. They're kind enough to allow the county to use some of that parking during the period where we don't yet have a parking garage. So construction vehicles can park there, public can park there, and that's a big help to us. That happens, go back one time, Cliff, that happens approximately in the July to September period of 2020. So we're looking at a little less than a year. Then the next thing that happens, once the church has moved out of this youth ministries building and into the juvenile court building, we demolish the youth ministries building. We have to demolish that building to do our site work. Our building would actually overlap the edge of that building, and the entire site has to be graded at the same time. We also want to grade this site at the same time that we're grading that one. So we've demolished the youth ministries building now. We've graded the site. We're commencing our site work, and we're commencing our garage construction. We'll use this area. If you'll recall, the county bought a small parking area on Water Street from the church a while ago. That's going to be our lay-down area. So we'll put steel on that site, we'll put large concrete panels on that site, and then they'll be moved over to our site as necessary. We have parking available from the church. We can't use it Sunday morning. They've asked us to be very mindful of that. There'll be funerals occasionally where we have to plan to have parking at some other location or further down the street or whatever. We'll cope with that. All construction projects run into that sort of thing. But we're looking now at a period of September, October 2020. That's about a year away. That's not very long to be in that process. And you can see all the dominos that have to fall between now and then in order to meet those deadlines. Step six, now we've completed the parking garage. We'd like to have that done approximately June of 2021. We've got the ongoing courthouse construction. And by June of 2021, we'd expect to have the building, what's called, dried in. And we're now working in the interior of the building instead of on the exterior of the building. And then step seven, we would have a completed courthouse. We'd have a completed plaza. The garage has been available to us for a year. The garage has been available to us for a year at that point, a little more than a year. If things go really well, an ideal time to move your courts would be in December of 2022. The courts will shut down anyway for a period of time toward the end of the year, and that would be an ideal time to move. If we miss that deadline, we'd be moving somewhere in the mid to late first quarter of 2023. But we'll do our best to hit that December 22 deadline. Here's what we won't do. We're not going to move the courts into that building until the building is ready. I do not want to move them in on top of punch lists. We've seen that happen in too many places, and it's just not a pleasant experience for anybody. And I'm not so much worried about the judges, I'm worried about the public being in the middle of a mess. So we will do everything in our power to avoid that, and if necessary, we'll delay the opening of the building by a month or two to make sure that doesn't happen. And of course, all of this will be coordinated with the court because they have to notice parties months in advance. So we'll be coordinating very closely with the court to make sure that we're all on board with the same schedule. Let's see what else we've got here. I need to catch up with my own pages now. The next thing I'd like to show you is the revised jail pod. We think it's a pretty clever plan, actually. We're going to build in phase one, two dormitories. We're going to have a control room that is elevated that looks down into those jail pods. These are strictly dormitory housing, and you can see just rows of bunk beds. This that you're looking at is dayroom space with tables for dining. So this is their dayroom area. We have a classroom training area inside recreation area for, for bad weather days. And then over here, we have an outdoor space that can be used for outdoor recreation. There'll be fencing, perimeter fencing around the entire area, and initially, the fencing will extend as you see it here. Long-term, the fencing would extend all the way down to here because in phase two, we can add two more pods and control them from that same control room. Now, probably takes two people at that point in the control room, but initially, we'll start with one person in the control room and then potentially a rover. Your connection to the jail is right here. They'll come down a, a covered walkway, and then they'll pass at, at one point to get to recreation, they'll pass under that control room. Again, it's elevated. So it's a pretty cool design, and we're going to try, if we can, to upsize the mechanical plant, which will be right over here, to accommodate all four pods long-term. I don't know how soon you'll do those other two pods. You could do them as part of phase two. So we'll see. But we think that that's a, an excellent way to get you some immediate relief, and then juveniles would move into one of the adult female housing pods in the jail. So we've covered the male juveniles as well with this plan. Moving on, and again, I can come back to anything you want me to talk about. I assume you can ask me questions either now or later. I'm not sure how that works, but I'll be here as long as you want me. This you've seen before as well. What you're looking at on the right is sort of an overhead computer projection of what the courthouse looks like. And the plaza doesn't look exactly like that. The plaza's still morphing, and we have a design charrette on it tomorrow. It'll morph a little bit more, but you're looking at a combination of concrete and grass and trees. We want to do something very soft along Main Street here. We want to have some formality, but we still want to remember where we are, and we want to remember that we're surrounded by churches, by a library. So this is going to be a, a pretty gentle transition from Main Street to the courthouse. The courthouse itself, though, has a formal look. So as you move toward the courthouse, you, you pick up some real formality here at this two-story front entrance. The parking garage is shown over here. The top surface of the garage will be a parking lot as well. So you've got a deck up on top, and then the rest of it is in sections below. Again, we're thinking that this is either five and a half floors or it's six floors, maybe it's six and a half floors. We'll see what we can afford and what works. Back here is where inmates enter in, in a controlled Sallyport. This, this is a, a very controlled garage. Judges enter along here, and we also have a loading dock, or it's actually not a dock in this case, but a, a loading platform area here. If we go to the next slide, I showed you this last time. We're very proud of what we're coming up with for the look of the courthouse. This is an artist's rendering, so obviously, we haven't actually built anything yet, but it is very much like what it'll look like. I don't, there won't be as many bushes and trees as what you're seeing here. I think we're hiding a little too much of the courthouse. But it's, it's a general idea. The plaza will change, but it's a general idea. The building itself, we're, we're pretty well settled. We may change some little details, but we think we're headed in a good direction there. See if we have anything else. We had nothing else planned in our slides. Do I answer questions at this point?
I think we'll, I think we'll wait until Commissioner Shale presents the actual resolution and see if we have any questions at that point. That's it.
Okay. And then I can pick up questions from the public comment portion as well, perhaps if...
No, just in a commission meeting, just commissioners. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. At this point, we're going to go to public comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to sign up for public comments? Okay. Mr. Jay Ingram, 755B Newton Lane, Gallatin, Tennessee. Mr. Ingram, you'll have five minutes.
I won't take that much time. General probably doesn't believe that, but...
Could we, could we have a show of hands who think Mr. Ingram will take less than five minutes?
All right. My name is Jay Ingram. I'm an attorney with Phillips and Ingram here in Gallatin, Tennessee. I've been practicing for 20 years. My father, Bob Ingram, has been practicing for about 43 years, and our law firm, Phillips and Ingram, has been on the square since 1981. So I've grown up really practicing in all of the courts in this county, and I want to tell you, I think this project is needed. It's long overdue. I think that the project is going to improve the functionality, accessibility, and the safety of the Sumner County Court system. Safety, one of the things, I'll tell you a story from years ago. My father and I were trying a first-degree murder case, and in those kind of cases, obviously, tensions are pretty high, and there was some threats, not only to our client, but also to my father and I. And everybody was in the courtroom, and, and it got out that there might be a weapon that might have been smuggled into the courtroom. So they had to clear the entire courtroom and go row by row, pew by pew, and check for, for weapons. And, you know, people think, when you think about safety, they think about criminal cases a lot, but the cases that I really feel more threatened is divorces and orders of protection. And the setup that we have now, and I'm in courts, you know, different courts every morning usually, if you're having order of protection or you have a divorce, you might be talking to your client right here, and the other party and their lawyer are right there, just in the same hallway. There's just no place to really separate and, and talk privately. And it's just a miracle, really, that somebody hasn't gotten hurt over all the years, the tensions being so high. A lot of times when somebody thinks, I didn't ask for this divorce, I didn't ask to lose my children, I, I, you know, and, and this lawyer or this judge is taking my kids away or, or they're, you know, they're, my life is going to fundamentally change, and people sometimes make poor choices. So the safety that's going to be afforded to us by this courthouse, I think, is something that a lot of people don't think about. It's also going to just expand and improve the Sumner County Sheriff's Office and the jail. I do a lot of criminal defense, and there's no good place, a lot of times, to meet with your clients, particularly those that are incarcerated. And it's, that, that can be very problematic as well, and it just takes a long time getting back into the jail, getting back out. I think that the, the new, the modernization of it is going to really help with functionality for everybody that you're dealing with. The space it's going to provide for the female inmates, and particularly the juveniles, a lot of people don't know our juveniles that we have in Sumner County are having to be sent to Murfreesboro to be held at a juvenile detention facility over there, and, and that's at a cost to the county. So, you know, we're, we don't want to lock up a ton of juveniles, obviously, but there's some violent enough juveniles that have come into this county, out of other counties, to commit crimes, and, and they're going to need to be locked up from time to time. This project is going to add parking to downtown, and, and working in downtown for the last 20 years, I know it's difficult on a lot of the merchants. I've been president of Greater Gallatin. I've been, worked with Dona Belote and the people there. It's difficult. Businesses sometimes come and go because there's not enough parking. People think they like convenience, be able to come right up, and so adding this parking garage, I think, is going to be a great thing for all those businesses when court isn't in session, to be able to have a place to come down and park, and particularly for things like the Square Fest, Main Street Festival, and things like that. So I think the parking is going to be an added bonus that people that aren't involved in the court system are really going to appreciate. You know, I think this project is going to be something that the citizens of Sumner County and Gallatin can really be proud of. When I first heard about it, I'm somebody that, I love Sumner County, and I love Gallatin. People make fun of me. They call me Mr. Gallatin sometimes. But I was worried that, oh, we're going to move the courthouse, it's going to tear the heart out of downtown Gallatin. But instead, if you all move forward with this project, you're talking about investing in the heart of Gallatin, investing in the heart of the county, in the county seat, and this thing's going to be a crown jewel that I think a lot of people will really be proud of, and it's going to meet our needs for the court system for the next 80 years. And it's, it's really forward-thinking. Look at what we, a lot of times with schools, by the time we plan a school and fund a school and build a school, we need another school, and we're behind so much. And so that's what I think we're going to be able to stay ahead of the game with the planning and the help of JPA by doing this project. So I would submit to you, it's a wise investment. It's been a lot of thought coming into it. I know there was some talk about, you know, is this second reading and all of that, and I don't know all y'all's rules, but people have been working on this thing two, three years now. A lot of work has gone into it. I think it is a wise investment, and it's going to be good for the, the county, City of Gallatin. I ask that you please vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. He was within his 32nd grace period.
Good evening. I am Mark Smith, and I practiced law here for 35 years before I became the clerk and master, which is the administrator of the Chancery Court here in Sumner County. And I want to thank the leadership of this commission and the forward-looking attitude that you have taken because not only did you come in to identify a problem, but you've come up with a magnificent solution. Now, the old courthouse and myself are in many ways the same. We're both showing our age. And this courthouse has served the citizens of Sumner County for 80 years and served us well. At one time, it did everything in the county, including the jail. But right now, we're in the information, in the computer age, and this courthouse just really wasn't designed to meet the needs of a modern society and all these computer and energy. We've got, well, the fire marshal might shut us down. We've got extension cords everywhere trying to get power to the needed computers, and it just is not a good situation. So I do want to thank the commission because we now have Wi-Fi in four of the five floors of the courthouse just in the last couple of weeks. Now, we also are very fortunate, and Sumner County has been chosen along with Williamson County to be the leaders in the state on electronic filing, and that's going to be a big plus because that's going to save us space over the years and going to save us a lot of money. And this archive that we're filling up every day with paper is not going to be needed as much. It's going to take us a few years, probably by the time we get into the new courthouse, we'll be seeing the benefits of e-filing, but we're going to be, this county is going to be one of the leaders in the state. We're going to show about 85 other counties in the state how to do it and how to do it right. So that's exciting. Now, we have an opportunity, and you have an opportunity, to lead us into the future with a facility that should serve us for the next 80 years just as well as this courthouse has done. And it's going to make us proud, and when people see that courthouse, they're going to be impressed with Sumner County. They see that magnificent library that the county and the city jointly built, but this is the county courthouse, and it's going to show for everyone that's coming here because, as you know well, we're exploding. And that's just going to be another thing that we can point to and show how forward-looking we are. It is greatly needed, and I, and I'd just like to ask at this time, everybody who is here tonight, who is supporting this project for the courthouse and for the jail, would you please stand up? So you can see, there's a thank you. So you can see, there's a lot of interest and a lot of support for this and a tremendous need for this. As stated by JPA, we got to get started on this now because the prices are going to go up, and we can save money by getting forward, and we're going to save the county a lot of money because every day they come to our courthouse, they want to know, well, where's juvenile court? Well, it's not in this courthouse. Well, where's city court? Well, it's not in this courthouse. Where's general sessions court? Well, it's, it's down here a while, and it's difficult for the citizens to know where to go. However, when they see this courthouse, they're going to be proud to be here in Sumner County, unless Judge Gay's going to send them down to the new jail annex. Then they might not be. But they will be proud of what this committee has done, what this commission has done, and they'll continue to be proud of the advances that we're making here in Sumner County. So I encourage you to go ahead and give the go-ahead on this so we can get moving forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Commissioner from Gallatin, Mr. Sean Fennell.
It's hard to go behind the two attorneys right there, but our mayor would like to be here this evening, but today was a busy day for us in the city. We had the State of the City address, and we had a sold-out performance that she gave, and she had to do it again this evening, so that was a good thing. So I've got something here that the mayor texted me right here that she'd like for me to read to the commission right here. "On behalf of the mayor, who cannot be here due to the State of the City presentation and the rest of the council, the City of Gallatin is appreciative of the county's commitment to keep the criminal justice system in downtown Gallatin. We are grateful that you value the historical courthouse and are committed to renovating it and working with us as you're willing to build the garage first, as that will make the process much better for our existing businesses. We look forward to working with the county as this moves forward and welcome the new facility to the historic downtown." One thing that I'd like to say is the great presentation of JPA and the staff, I mean, they really know their stuff. And when he got up here and gave his presentation, he started showing the different buildings throughout the city and where they was located at. But if you remember back in the day on the historical courthouse, we had many of the government offices in one building along with the court system, and now it seems like they have become scattered throughout the city. And it seems like we have lost some of our identity, and you guys have the opportunity here to put all this back together underneath one building and, I think, give us some of our identity back. You know, the hard thing is you guys have got to be the ones to vote. I think everybody in here would like to see a new courthouse. The thing is, is can we afford it, and when can we afford it? That's the question. But I do support this very much, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Russ Edwards.
Thank you for everybody's time this evening. We got a lot of lawyers lined up, so you know it's going to be a long, long evening. But I won't, hopefully, I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. In addition to being an attorney, I think most of you know me. I'm a Hendersonville city alderman, so I know about late nights, and I have all y'all be... We went till 3:45 the other morning, so nobody can complain about going late here. But no, I will be brief, and I do appreciate all of your service. I certainly appreciate it. Since I've been in office for the last year, I completely understand being up here late and having to listen to people like me come up here, and for practically no compensation, I certainly appreciate it. I am an attorney, and I have been since 2003, and our office is in Hendersonville. My father has been practicing for 45 years in Hendersonville or in Sumner County. I'm a lifelong Sumner County resident. I'm also a member and officer of the Sumner I'm also a member and officer of the Sumner County Bar Association, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the bar association tonight, but I can speak for almost all attorneys I've spoken with, that this courthouse is necessary, and this courthouse is very supported by almost all the members of the bar. And I don't want to be, in an effort not to be redundant, and kind of to touch on some items not mentioned previously, I think Mr. Ingram spoke on this, but the security for judges, for the judges is very important. We have some very good judges that are here tonight, and I don't know if they're going to advocate for this, because they're very humble people, but I'm deeply concerned for the security. I mean, the security right now in the courthouse is practically nothing. These judges are having to walk between the litigants in cases that they're deciding on the most emotional topics they have, which is custody. So they're very vulnerable, they're very at risk with this new courthouse. It seems like the security will be a lot better, and it will protect our judges who are making the most important decisions in people's lives. And I would say that it is, it is our responsibility to build this courthouse now. It's irresponsible to put this off on later generations. A courthouse is something that is necessary. This isn't a luxury item. We have to have a courthouse in every community. If we just put this off and say no, we're just going to put this off on future generations, we're going to put it off on our children and grandchildren to pay for. It's our responsibility, as taxpayers, it's your responsibility, as the commissioners, to go ahead and fund this now, so this should be fully funded now, this should be, move, this should move in the right direction of getting this fully funded, hopefully within the next three or four years. While many may not use it, it's like a hospital, it's necessary, but unlike a hospital, a courthouse cannot be privately funded. It has to come from you, it has to come from the government, it has to come from the taxpayers. You cannot privately fund a courthouse, so all the burden rests on you, the commissioners, to fund this and to fund it now. And I would, I would strongly urge all of you to vote for it now, to vote for everything you can, to move this in the right direction of fully funding this now. And again, I really appreciate your time, I really appreciate all of your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. City Commissioner from Gallatin, Mr. Jimmy Overton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. I am on the Gallatin City Council, thank goodness we don't have very many late nights, so that's great. But, ladies Jim, we've been up here several times before, and I just want to say thank you. I know how hard your job is, I know you have, you're going to have a very difficult job. It's hard to fund these kind of projects. This means a lot to the City of Gallatin. I think, as Jay stated, and Jay's been on a courthouse and his family as long as anybody has, they're just about, but this is important to us. Not only is the courthouse important to us, but the parking garage. And thank you all for helping us get this parking garage built on the front end instead of on the back end. We, as the city council, has agreed to partner with this commission to help pay for part of this parking garage, and we want to do that, we're committed to do that, and thank you all for moving it up and helping. If it was on the back end, I think we would have to build our own parking garage, because we just couldn't wait that timeline. We waited now for a long time, and our citizens have deserved a parking garage, they've asked us for one, and we want to help you all build it. But thank you for the investment you're making in Gallatin, and if there's anything we can do as far as the city's concerned, we'll be glad to work with you. Thank you a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Overton.
Have to make sure I get my five minutes. Thank you, Chairman, thank you, commissioners. Once again, I find myself standing in front of you, asking you to do the right thing. Once again, I'll be pleasantly surprised if what I'm asking actually occurs. Once again, those of us who said that the latest tax increase was smoke and mirrors to actually raise the credit limit so that we could borrow more money, to spend more money, put this county deeper and deeper in debt, have proven to be correct. Once again, this means that the very politicians, you, who were elected to represent the citizens of this county, have been unable or unwilling to do your due diligence while not taking care of the people you're supposed to be looking out for. A week ago, I was in front of the City of Gallatin and the city council, and asked them to stop, catch their breath, take an assessment of where we're at, both from a growth perspective, from a financial perspective, and I'm asking you to do the same thing tonight. You know, we say elections have consequences, but really what you're doing is enslaving the very children that you're using as the justification for these tax increases. The honored gentleman who spoke before said, you know, we need to do this so that we can take care of the kids and grandchildren. Well, what we're taking care of is we're giving them debt. By the time all of this is done, by the time we put in schools, by the time we put in, you know, a half a million dollars on a vacant lot, by the time we put in all this infrastructure and all these things, our debt will be a half a billion dollars. I mean, that is incredible, for our little county to be in debt, a half a billion dollars. There was a resolution passed by the Sumner County Commission several years ago that said we wanted to be debt-free by 2023. We cannot be debt-free when we are adding millions and millions and millions of dollars. There's no way you can do that. And it's just, people are not blank checks. Now, I'm not saying we don't need a new courthouse, I'm not saying we don't need a parking garage. What I'm saying is, we cannot afford it. This county is on a spending spree like there is no tomorrow, but there is a tomorrow. And the kids that you are constantly putting up as the reasons that we have to have increased taxes are going to be the ones that are stuck paying for this. I've got maybe, I don't know, 10, 20 years left, if I'm lucky, or if I take after my dad, I might make it another 30. But, but those kids that we're constantly saying we're doing it for the children are the ones who are going to have to pay off a half a billion dollars in debt for our little county. So I asked you before, about four months ago, what is your job as a county commissioner? Truly, what is your job? Is it to tax and spend? Is it to run everybody out of the county because they can no longer afford it? I know you guys have had Art Laffer here, some of you are familiar with the Laffer curve, right? There's a maximum where if you exceed taxes too much, people will leave, they'll vote with their feet, they'll go to Rutherford, they'll go to Wilson, okay? And then your tax base disappears, and then you've got to increase taxes even more. You're on the verge of reaching that critical mass on that Laffer curve. You know, what is your job? Is it to help developers with taxpayer money? That's what it seems like with that whole Liberty Sewer, Liberty Creek Sewer fiasco, okay? So you've got that going on. You know, we've got examples where people are coming up with their own benefits from different decisions that are being made. Refusals to block a future greenway, you know, the shell game with the First Baptist Church. What I'm asking you to do is do your job and take care of the people who are paying for all of this. Don't just write blank checks that we're going to have to do, we're going to have to pay for. So please, do your due diligence. Again, I respect the people that are there, but they're saying that, you know, we'll save money, we're not saying, pardon? Yeah, we're not saving money, we're spending millions of dollars in interest because we're borrowing the debt to pay this. That really is unacceptable. So please, when I ask you, who do you serve? You serve ultimately the taxpayers, the people who come up with the money to do this. Please respectfully take care of them, at the same time you're looking at all of these other decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fennell.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Strong, I live in Gallatin, I'm the Circuit Court Clerk for Sumner County, and I have had the opportunity to be involved in this process with commissioners, JPA, judges, city officials, and other county leaders and architects to this point, and I have been nothing but impressed with JPA's professionalism, as well of their knowledge of the judicial system, its needs and safety issues specific to courts, and specific to our courts, specifically. I commend this commission on the decisions it's made so far in this process, and their desire to seek outside experts. We don't know what we don't know, so we hire people that do, and their engagement of all the offices that work in the judicial system, which has not been the case in the past, as well as community leaders that will be affected by this project. I know these are not easy issues to solve, and I sincerely appreciate all of you and your duty to be good stewards with my tax dollars. Also, please know that I will do my job to the absolute best of my ability in any facility that I am blessed to work in, and I will serve this county and our court system well, regardless of your decisions tonight and in the future. I'm also blessed with an incredible staff, a lot of which are here, that will do the same. I do ask, however, that you support this Judicial Center project, as detailed by JPA. I'd like to share with you some of the difficulties and the realities that the Circuit Court Clerk's office faces with having courts in multiple locations. I could talk for a long time about all the different difficulties that we have, but I'm going to focus on this specific issue. It costs my office and the county more money, because I have to employ someone for the sole purpose of running files and paperwork between multiple locations. I have five different departments within the office, and I am unable to cross-train any employees between the departments to cover any vacancies that I may have, because geographically, it is not doable. One of my clerk's offices is in a completely different building than the court that is served by the office, and there is no possible solution to that. That means multiple boxes of files have to be carried between two buildings multiple times per week. While we've made great progress on digitizing years' worth of old files to try to eliminate this issue, going paperless at this time is much more complicated when dealing with permanent public records. Along the same lines, we have archived files in five different buildings across the county, and we make trips to pull archived files every day. It would save time and money to have all the files centrally located. The biggest challenge I face with multiple locations is with jurors. Once a month, I send summons to 300 to 350 people, citizens of this county, requiring them to show up for jury duty, and threatening to fine them if they don't show up. Every month, we have jurors that show up to the wrong courthouse despite the fact that I tell them which courthouse to show up to, and they grow frustrated to learn that they have to go through security in another location, especially if the weather is poor, when they really don't want to be here in the first place. Oftentimes, where they appear on the first day is in a different courtroom in a different building than when they have to appear a second time for jury service later in the month, due to courtroom sizes and different types of cases being heard in different buildings. Every once in a while, we have a criminal trial and a civil trial on the same day, and because we do not have a central location for the jury pool, I have to split them up and request that once jurors in one building get dismissed, they then have to promptly report to the other building to ensure that we have enough jurors for each trial. Admittedly, this does not happen very often, and only happens a couple times a year, but is it extremely frustrating for our citizens when it does occur. While we go to great lengths to make jurors comfortable and provide for their needs, I also spend a fair amount of time apologizing to citizens that we have summoned to the courthouse for the confusion between courthouses, the inability to properly control the temperature in the courtrooms, for the bathroom facilities, for the lack of technology and poorly operating sound systems, for the difficulty in parking, for not having any hot water in the bathrooms when washing their hands, for the lack of wheelchair accessibility, for how uncomfortable the chairs are that we require them to sit in for eight hours a day during a trial, for the uncomfortable benches that we require them to sit on for two to five hours at a time before they get moved to the other uncomfortable chairs, and other random facility-related issues that we encounter at all the courthouses. Just the other day, the issue was parts of the ceiling falling in the courtroom, then followed by four separate areas of leaking water. Luckily, the jurors were not in the courtroom that day, and it happened after Mr. Taylor left the courtroom, so he didn't get hit with any of the ceiling. I know you're, I know you have big decisions to make, and again, I sincerely thank you for your time and your consideration on this important issue facing our growing county and growing court system. I love my job, I love my staff, I love this county, and I want first and foremost, my staff, our judges, and our citizens to be safe in what is already a volatile system, and would like for us all to be able to serve this county with efficiency and convenience for its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. At this point, without objection, let's take a, I've got 8:24, let's come back at 8:30. I've had a couple requests for bathroom break, so let's take a little break. Recession for five minutes. We're going to get started back in two minutes, two minutes.
Yep.
Are you ready?
If you stand up, my camera, it's not right.
I'll just sit. We'll come back to order.
I'm always afraid someone's going to build Taylor in one of his chairs.
All right, your written reports are on your desk. We'll need a motion to vote on the notaries. Motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Echols. Let's put that on the board.
Notary applications are on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Nineteen votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote, anyone wish to change your vote. With 20 affirmative votes, notary applications approved. Please show Commissioner Graves voting yes. Anyone else?
Yes.
Commissioner Goode.
Commissioner Goode voting yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. We'll go to committee on committees. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Committees met tonight in the three-hour scheduled meeting. We had a library board resignation shot late. Term expires July 2022. Library Board recommended Beth Key. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode. Seconded by Commissioner Nipper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Key was my junior U.S. history teacher. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resource Authority's six-year term, we're still waiting on the City of Gallatin for a recommendation. That's a deferral information-only zoning board appeals. A five-year term for Don Dickerson, that's a reappointment. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Ring. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regional Planning Commission Luther Bratton is a citizen of zoning representing Portland for a four-year term. That was, I'm sorry, recommended for a reappointment. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Echols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Mr. Wright's opposed. We'll show the vote as 22 to 1. Ms. Krueger's not in the chamber yet, so 22 to 1 with Mr. Wright voting no. Motion passes. All right, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Civil Service Board Sally Wade Brown employee. We're waiting on the Employee Association to make a recommendation here, so that was a deferral information-only. Tourism exploring term for Tammy Wallace, that was a two-year term for on tourism to be reappointed. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Ring. See no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Remember the last month when we had two commissioners that asked not to serve on what the Committee on Committees came up? First one was emergency services. That was discussed, and it was recommended to put Mr. Chris Taylor, that was on that committee to begin with, back on that committee. It's only serving on one. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Gomenden. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yes, sir. I'm the one that made change to that committee that caused that opening, and I spoke with my fellow commissioner in the first district who agreed to step in in my place if passed and appropriate, and I moved his nomination, and that is Commissioner Terry Wright.
Okay. All right. We're not really taking, this is going through the committee. My understanding, let me check with the law director, my understanding is this went through the committee process. Somebody can offer a nomination. Okay. All right, so we've got a motion and a second for Commissioner Terry Wright.
And I'll speak to that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead. Before we vote.
It was not a, if you'll go back and look, it was not actually a nomination last month that was a recommendation. We mentioned that Committee on Committees is the process, if you want to put your name in the hat, is to go back through Mr. Kemp's office and/or the chairman. I did speak with Commissioner Wright at the time and said he would be willing to serve. That's true. But Mr. Taylor, that was only serving on one committee because of his budget duties and was served on it before and has as much or more from a standpoint of a background to serve on that committee, so the committee was unanimous that Mr. Taylor go back on that committee. That's the reasoning.
Ms. Kemp, Ms. Denny? Came through the committee. Okay. Okay. Okay, so we're going to vote.
Okay.
All right, so since Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Chris Taylor, let me be clear, Commissioner Chris Taylor was nominated by Committee on Committees. He will be the green button. Commissioner Wright will be the yellow button. Okay? Everybody clear? Any questions? Okay, hang on one second. All right, Commissioner Chris Taylor, green button. Commissioner Terry Wright, yellow button.
The vote is now open. Please record your vote. All 24 votes are entered. Anyone wish to change your vote? With 15 affirmative votes, Commissioner Taylor is elected.
Okay, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Commission. The other vacancy was Highway, and it was recommended that Commissioner-
Luke Tinsley fill that spot, and it was unanimous also. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Goode. I didn't see the second, Ms. Deanne DeWitt. See no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Library Claims Committee vacancy, it was that recommended that Commissioner Deanne DeWitt fill that position. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Echols. See no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, everyone's familiar with the Technology Ad-Hoc Committee that was formed. Ad hoc committees obviously are not standing committees, so when the chairman calls, it was recommended with our going forward that the same exact committee remain the same, Commissioners Tinsley, DeWitt, Echols, Krueger, and Mansfield. It was unanimous. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Becker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the following month's business is on your agenda, and that is it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goode. Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, nothing to vote on tonight, but I do want to share two points with the full body tonight. The Director of Schools met with us in Education Committee this month, and the new campus at Liberty Creek is beautiful. The architectural renderings were shared with us, the colors, those selections are on the school board website. The second point, the numbers for the school system from 2001 to 2002 school year up to the present, 2019, '20 first-quarter numbers were shared with us, and for the first time, we have surpassed 30,000 students in Sumner County kindergarten through 12th grade. That's a lot of young ones those SROs have to protect. But a lot of good things going on in our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I will encourage everybody, if you didn't get a chance to see the budget presentation, the school board presentation, if you go to the Sumner County Schools website, the new school campus, the renderings and everything are right there on it. It's worth a visit to check out and see what's going on there. Okay, Highway Commission, Mr. Graves. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Just a question for some information that we could get. We got the numbers of the enrollment, which is great. Is it available online, the core capacity? Because I know we've remodeled so many schools that the capacities have changed and don't know if we're still updating those numbers, but can we get the core capacities?
Yeah, there's, I think there's a document. Let me check and see. I believe-
There was a document.
We looked at this last year, I think it was last year we looked at this, when we were rezoning.
Yes.
There's a document. I'm not sure, let me see if I can find it. It's probably on the school board website and those documents on the board meetings, but let me see what we can find.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. And if I don't, Mr. Taylor, if I don't get it to you like tomorrow, the next day, just shoot me an email and I'll get it. Yes, sir. Highway Commission, Mr. Graves.
Mr. Chairman, we didn't meet this month.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graves. General Ops, Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gen Ops met in a joint meeting with the Budget Committee in September. The judicial project passed Gen Ops on a 6 to 1 vote. This item was discussed in committee at length after the presentation that was very similar to the one that we heard tonight from JPA. As most of you know, we have been planning this project for over two years now, and we recognize the courage and the devotion of our SROs, our Sheriff's Department, our judges, our judicial employees. They have made do with too little for way too long. We have an opportunity here tonight to leave a legacy behind us with this building and this Judicial Center and building it, a building that will reflect their excellence. And so I am bringing forth tonight Resolution 1910-16, which will adopt the overall new judicial system project as presented by JPA.
Motion made by Commissioner Shell, seconded by Commissioner Goode. Commissioner Mo Taylor, you're in the queue.
Well, you know, I know a lot of this might go back to the financial end of it, but when we adopt the overall resolution such as this, we're basically saying, we're going to do it, and we're going to fund it. So to me, that's what this says, so it ties into funding mechanism of that. Well, we know what the funding mechanism is going to be or has been, and, you know, I appreciate everything they've said, all the speakers, you know, I can't disagree with everything they were said, but I can disagree with the overall resolution of this because, and my reasoning being is there was never, in my opinion, really one, but one location ever really heavily pursued. So, and that's, there's reasons for that. There's benefits for that to around the square of the City of Gallatin. We own land at different parts within the city limits of Gallatin. That would have made it economically more feasible for a project such as this. You know, once again, when we go to doing a project like this, it affects all of our citizens that pay taxes. I understand there may be a large majority of them that want this, but there's a large majority of them that don't want their taxes raised anymore. It's had them raised two times in the last five years. So maybe the ones that want it aren't reaching out to me, but the ones that don't want their taxes raised sure are. I mean, you know, that's what we have to look at. It's, you know, I'm not knocking the project, I'm not knocking the need, but this isn't my first choice for a Judicial Center, and I've posed these questions along the ways. Then the first time y'all have heard this, probably won't be the last. So I have to vote my conscience to benefit my constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Chris Taylor.
I don't hit a button. Okay, there we go. It absolutely is saying this is how we're going to plan it out, and we're going to eventually do it. Otherwise, we wouldn't have the plans. As far as the money and the bond goes, I've said it before, I'll say it again, based on the original timeline that JPA had, we were going to start building 2021, 2022. We didn't have to raise taxes for that. Our bond capacity was fine at that time. If you remember, David did a very lengthy presentation about our bond capacity. We can do it again if it's needed, and it discussed, sorry. It's not a punitive action, but to watch that. But it went into great detail about how our debt drops off each year, and this year, we had a bond capacity of 12 to 15 million. Next year, it would be 40. The year after that, it would be 98, I think he said. And that was without any kind of increase in revenue. So when you throw out a number of, we're a half a billion dollars in debt, it's somewhat disingenuous because debt continually falls off. We have debt that we're paying from 10 years ago. Bonds are 20-year bonds. And the way David does it and the way the state approves you and makes you do it is to stagger it in a fashion that you don't go into debts you can't handle, that you can't pay, and that's where you get your bond rating. Our bond rating is just a tiny bit below the best you can have, which is AAA. The only reason we didn't get AAA was twofold. One, because we're missing a couple financial rules on paper that they like to see that we've implemented, and two, we're just not really that big a county. So we fully expect the next time bond, when they come around to do it for us, we'll get AAA, which is the best you can get. The reason you get the best is because you pay your debt. They look at you, and fiscally, you're strong enough and you're healthy enough that they don't worry about it. We're set up, if we hit a little recession bump, we're set up debt-wise. When we approve this, bear in mind, tonight, the only thing we're paying for is the jailpods, moving the juvenile court, and then beginning the parking garage. And that's what we said we would do this year. Next year, if it rolls around, heaven forbid something bad happen, you're right, we'll have the plan, and if we choose to wait a year or two years, we just know it's going to cost that much more, but we don't have to do it. We'll do it just like we do with the schools. We'll build it as we see fit, but don't make any doubt about it. This is a plan to finish it out all the way through. Otherwise, you wouldn't do a plan. It doesn't make any sense to. We're set up to pay for it this year. We're set up to pay for what we need to next year. We're in great shape, and it's not a problem at all. And the people that say we're in great shape are impartial third parties, the State of Tennessee from the Comptroller's Office, and the bond agencies that issue our bond rating. Those two groups say that we're doing fantastic and that we've got it together. Again, we have a great finance group too that does it, and Mr. Long and his staff, but we're fine. We, I'm not going to, Mo is completely right about the location and anything else, but I'm just saying as far as the money goes, we're fine on that, and don't let that be a reason that you don't vote for something. So that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Ms. DeWitt, Commissioner DeWitt.
I just had a couple quick questions, JPA, if I could.
I just had a couple of quick questions. JPA, if I could, just follow on to your presentation.
Let me, hang on one second.
Is that possible?
Without objection, I'm gonna let Ms. DeWitt ask questions to JPA. Okay.
Is that the plan? I'm sorry if this is...
Oh, you're fine.
I know in the new jail pod design, I do think it's a really clever design. One little thing, just with the training room that you've put in that, in that design plan, is that for recovery court or any other specific purpose, or has there been input of how that's gonna get used?
The recovery court is actually in the new courthouse. This is strictly for inmates in custody in those jail pods.
Got it.
And on days when they can't go out to the outdoor recreation, they can have recreation activities in there. They can have classroom occurrences in there, but it's strictly for those inmates.
In those inmates. Okay, great. And then, second question, just for the record, I know that one of the next immediate steps in terms of the parking garage project is securing some property for that. And so if you could just explain a little bit about what that is and how, you know, when that, well, that will happen once we approve the plan today. Is that correct?
I don't see how you could approach a property owner without a plan approved by the commission. So if there's a way to do that, I certainly couldn't do it.
Right, understand.
But there has to be an approach made, and at that point, I think you have several different options that you can discuss with the property owners, including permanently reserved spaces on the ground floor, in the new parking deck, to you name it. So I think you'll have a lot of options you can discuss with them.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure we had that, it was all understood and on the record. Thank you. That's it. Oh, actually, one other quick question. I think you had mentioned something about potentially expediting the parking garage project. Was that, were you referring to the Gantt chart a little bit in terms of the proposed timeline? I know that there's, there's a little gap between when you have the parking garage design ending in maybe July of next year and then commencing construction.
Part of our problem is our construction manager at risk being able to mobilize and work on the site in an appropriate fashion. So you can't really start one thing and then start another one a couple of months later and do it in a cost-effective way. So they'll put their job trailers there, they'll clear the site together, and they'll start construction as soon as they can. So we think that is the quickest that we can expedite the design and construction process. We'll know more as we get into it. Our CM at Risk has only been on board with us for a short time, and we have another meeting with them tomorrow. So we'll find out more as we go along.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. DeWitt. I'm gonna ask while JPA is up, does anyone else, we've got Mr. Graves, the County Executive, Mr. Mansfield in the queue, did any of y'all have a question for JPA, or do you have a comment? Go ahead, Mr. Mansfield, we're gonna jump to you first. Hang on one second, let me get the microphone to you, or the camera to you. There you go.
So just to echo, Commissioner DeWitt had asked, to clarify, so the plan is to approach the landowners for the parking garage after this plan is approved, correct?
Yes.
Do we have any idea or rough guesstimate about what this land acquisition might cause?
Part of the reason that I wanted to have a contingency, an overall project contingency, is because I can't budget that right now. It's not just a question of whether the property behind the properties along Main Street and Water Street have value, it's what is the parking worth back there? And it's very possible that you could do some sort of a swap arrangement where they're giving up a parking space behind their building, but they're being guaranteed reserve spaces on the ground floor undercover in the new parking garage, lighted undercover. I don't know that there is a money transfer that occurs. If there is, I don't know what it is. But we have sufficient contingency to cover any eventuality.
Okay. Add a question, you can tell me if it's appropriate or not.
Sure.
Time. My question was, if Gallatin is pushing up the timeline or encouraging us to, what portion, I've not heard it, if I have, my apologies, what portion will they pay towards this?
Let me ask Commissioner Chris Taylor, do you know?
That is actually gonna be worked out with JPA and Gallatin, when we actually get the portion where we can start having hard numbers.
Hang on one second, Commissioner Taylor, I'm sorry. There you go.
Still very confusing to me. Actually, Jeremy, what we're gonna do is, since we don't have hard numbers for actually exactly what it's gonna cost, I mean, we know the idea of how much per parking spot, but until we spend the money on the architecture, say this is how big we can build it, how many lots, or how many spaces we can get in there, then we'll get a real cost for it. At that point, JPA is gonna negotiate with Gallatin, and it's gonna be more so, how much access does Gallatin want to it compared to how much they're willing to pay, is the easiest way to say it. So it's gonna benefit them, it can benefit them a whole lot, or it can benefit them a little bit. It really depends on what they're gonna do. But my understanding from them, they were holding off on issuing a bond specifically with the idea that they knew they would need to include three to four million or a little bit more for us. So again, the numbers, the numbers have been generally spoke about, but until JPA gives us good hard numbers, we, there's no sense talking to them about, hey, how much can you pay? Because we really don't know how much it's gonna be. That kinda clear it.
And you said, estimate around three to four million, so that kinda close to half?
That was the number they originally said. That was a year or so ago. The cost at that time, we were thinking was, you know, maybe seven or eight million. So it was about half. Now it's more towards nine, 10 million. We're hoping it's not much more than that by the time we actually start building it. And that's gonna, again, depend on their bond capacity and what they can do, and I wouldn't even think of speaking of that. So, but that's, they're coming into it with an idea of working with JPA on it, but that, it's not like they're gonna walk up and say, hey, here's 100,000, nice job. I mean, they're making a commitment. They've made a public commitment on more than one occasion. When they passed that resolution, they said it. The Mayor Brown has said it. And then again, in their budget stuff, they've said it because they held off on doing a bond just so they can make sure and get ours included in it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Commissioner Steve Graves?
Mr. Chairman, why wouldn't we go to the property owners up front and ask and talk to them first? It could be an issue, however many it is, I'm not sure about the numbers there, how many, and how much land it is. But it could be an issue. What are we gonna do if, are we gonna have another issue, or are we gonna have to do something to take their property, or what? Who can answer that?
I mean, I don't know that we can answer that tonight, Mr. Graves. My guess, and this is just speculation on my part, is, and Law Director can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the property that we're looking at is owned by the businesses there. Is that correct? So I think what Mike was suggesting is, is that they're probably gonna want covered, lightlit, secure parking places in a garage designated for their business as opposed to being outside in the elements would be my, but we can't really speculate on that until, but I also don't think that a business owner is gonna enter into any kind of negotiation until they know that there's a plan approved.
Well, Mr. Chairman, they might not afterwards. We might get in another situation where we don't have whatever amount of property that is. And that's, my question was why?
I'm gonna turn it over to JPA. Hang on one second, let me get you hit the, there you go.
I know that this is not an entirely satisfactory answer, because each time I've come to you, I haven't been able to tell you everything that you would want to know six months or a year down the road. But this is sort of like eating an elephant. This is a very, very complicated project with a lot of moving parts, and you just have to take it one bite at a time. If the commission approves the overall project in scope, you'll still approve individual funding elements as they come up. But if you're approving the overall project in scope, I have money now to pay architects to design the parking garage. I have money to pay the construction manager at risk to give us cost estimates. We can approach the property owners and start to have an intelligent conversation with them. What could I tell them now? The county hasn't even approved this in concept, and I would have no authorization at all to approach them. So I think we just have to take this one step at a time. There's some trust involved in anything like this, but I've never let you down. In the two and a half years that we've worked for you, we've gone through each step. We've accomplished each thing that we said we were going to accomplish. We negotiated with the church on the property. We've hired each component of our team and gotten good team members. Each time I've come to you, I've been able to give you more detailed information. We'll just continue to do our jobs, and I see no reason why we'd hit any real problem here. That's the most honest answer I can give you.
Mr. Chairman, I understand, and I'm for the project, but I still wanna know, that didn't answer my question, and I know what you said. Why, when we talk to them up front and try to get idea, what if we get down to this point in negotiations with them, and they say, well, we can't do it? Are we gonna take care of that property owner now too, while the construction's going on for a year? When they got, need seven or eight, 10 parking places and they don't have any? What are we gonna do there? No answers have been that way either. Maybe there ain't an answer. I've been dealing with a utility company for 15 years. When we put a water line in and we have to get on somebody's property, we try our best, and always success up front to work with that property owner to get that easement before we put the water line in. Once you start a water line, you get halfway through it and you don't have a easement, well, it's a little bit late. Now, what are we gonna do if that happens? Is there an avenue we'll take?
I think we have to cross that bridge. Mr. Graves, I mean, yeah, Michelle, let me get a Michelle.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graves. It's a great question. Just like you just said, when you're gonna build a water line, the plan is in existence first. You know you're gonna build the water line. You've hired it, you know exactly where that water line's going, and then you're gonna approach the homeowners. We're doing that in the same process as what you just described. The plan will be in place that we're gonna build a parking garage, and then we're gonna be able to meet with them and have an intelligent conversation. There are only about, that seems really loud, there's only a couple of property owners that this involves. One of them happens to be Mr. Ingram's father, who owns one of them. Mr. Ingram is on the Planning Advisory Committee with Justice Planning Association, so that he is very familiar with, with the plans of this. Those property owners are just as excited about this project as anybody is because it's revitalizing that downtown. From what, we have not had a formal conversation with them yet because I felt like, as the chairman, that that would not be in good standing because this board has not approved that plan yet. And I did not feel comfortable giving, you know, discussing with JPA to go ahead and discuss that with them, to negotiate, when this body has not approved that plan yet. I felt like this body had to make the commitment first, that we want to move forward with this project, and at that point, then we will negotiate with those owners of those few spots for those, for those. But they are, they are familiar with this process. Anybody that owns a business in downtown Gallatin is, I can assure you, is very familiar and in support of this project because it is going to revitalize that downtown. Does that help answer?
Not really. I still want to disagree with the process because we're gonna get in a mess. Are we gonna take somebody's property if it don't work out?
I don't think we can answer that tonight, Mr. Graves.
I think we could.
Well, I don't think we can answer it tonight.
We got other issues we've done that way.
Well, that's not for, that's not tonight's conversation, Mr. Graves.
It's about, it's about this resolution?
I don't think so. I disagree.
You don't think? What were you approving? How much is this project gonna cost then?
You just said you got the presentation right there in front of you.
I ask you, Mr. Chairman, how much is this property gonna cost?
The property?
No, the project.
The project, 91 million, I think?
Okay. Who's, how much is the city of Gallatin gonna fund of that?
I think we just, Commissioner Taylor just answered that.
He didn't answer how much. He gave a estimate, three or four million dollars, and that was...
Well, I don't know how to answer your question, Mr. Graves. Do you have anything else?
Not, yes, I do. How much total funding in this, Mr. Chairman?
How much is what? I'm sorry.
Total funding for this project.
What does it say on the page? Well, I mean, we're not really approving any dollar amount tonight. Where we're at right now is 91 million, 9,913 dollars.
That's counting the parking garage, Mr. Chairman?
The parking garage, the estimate right now is about 9 million.
Okay. That ain't counting nothing over its contingents or nothing like that?
Two million in contingency.
Okay.
In owner's contingency.
I'm for the project.
Yes, sir. I'm not, I'm not, I just don't know, like, I don't know what else to tell you, Mr. Graves. I don't have, we won't know that until we cross that bridge, really. I'm not, I'm not trying to be short with you, I just, I don't know what else to tell you.
I'm just trying to get all our ducks in a row beforehand, just like...
And I think all I can say is, in my time of working the last two years, it hasn't been as extensive as Michelle, but I can say, my work with JPA, I've been very impressed with the work that they've done.
I have too, and I agree, Michelle's done a great job. But that don't answer my question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, I, if I could give you an answer, Mr. Graves, I would, but I don't think I can.
Can't nobody give me that answer then? What if?
I don't, I don't think so, because we won't know until we get there.
What are we proving? And one more question. What are we approving in this resolution?
In this resolution, we're approving the overall project. So everybody knows, just like we did, I would liken it to 2015, when we approved the, how we were gonna spend the bond revenue if we pass, if we pass the bond for the schools, where we would know where all that money would go. All those individual projects for the individual schools had to come back before the commission to be funded. But we, if you remember, we went back and we gave a highlight of how all that money was gonna be spent. This lays out all the steps of the process for the Judicial Center, and just like tonight, we got the jail pods, and then Commissioner Taylor can explain what the other money's for. Those two parts are in there tonight, each individual part, whether it's the main building or any of the related parts, will have to come back before the commission to be funded. But this way, throughout the process, I think, you know, to what, I mean, I agree with what Commissioner Mo Taylor said, which is, and Commissioner Chris Taylor echoed, is, is that this is the process that we're probably gonna follow as long as, you know, 13 people vote for it. But this is the, this is the process, but in terms of dollars being spent, it doesn't do that. But I think what it does do is it then authorizes, it makes it more possible for us to go out and get the answers to the questions that you just posed. Because as Michelle said, it's hard to go negotiate. You don't want to get ahead of, you know, the flip side to what you're saying is you don't want to get the cart ahead of the horse and go out and start negotiating with people about their property when you have no, no authorization. If you remember, we intentionally did not address the parking garage because we wanted to see if the city of Gallatin wanted to partner with us. And so if you remember, last time, I remember when JPA presented to the body, a big issue for all of us was adequate parking for downtown Gallatin. The city of Gallatin wanted the parking because they wanted it to be, either they were gonna build their own on the other side of the square, or they were gonna partner with us. So I think what we're getting here is, is, you know, we had not really talked about that, making that move on the parking garage. So I think it's helpful to be able to get the answers that you're talking about by approving the plan tonight, and then that authorizes to go out and get those estimates so that we can in good faith move forward with strong estimates. And I also think, hearing JPA represent, part of that $2 million contingency is in case we, just for things like this, when we have those bumps that we don't exactly anticipate. Is that, that's, I can't think of anything else, Mr. Graves. I'm not holding back anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Holt, County Executive, County Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to address a couple of issues tonight. I just spoke with Mr. Ingram. I think that by and large, you've got three property owners to deal with, and I'm gonna address that first. However, the county owns the majority of that behind the library. And then, speaking Mr. Ingram, and I can't speak to Mr. Coley that's sitting out there, I know Mr. Ingram said he's willing to deal with the county in good faith. And I think that's, that's what we're talking about. Let's be honest, not everybody opposes everything. Making an $80 million investment downtown, now, these are business people. They understand that kind of investment is gonna have a direct impact on the value of their property. It's going to increase the value of their property. It's an investment. In addition to that, there's statements have been made that this county is woefully overdue, a half a billion dollars. That's 500,000, that's 500 million, excuse me. That is not the case. Our debt today is 233, 233 million dollars. That's a long way from 500 million dollars. If we were to issue, and you're not voting on that tonight, another 100 million, you'd still be at 333 million dollars. Now, the problem with that thinking is, we're just going out spending money and wasting money. That's not the case. I want you to think about, the last bond issue we issued was 103 million dollars. We did that for 2.9% interest. We did that for 2.9% interest. That's over 20 years. Today, interest rates are at historic lows. The cost of building inflation is running about 4%. So, the longer you postpone this big project, guess what? Even if you borrow money, the more money it costs you. So, we're being very frugal when we've looked at this. I will applaud JPA, they've done a great job. They've taken a lot of factors into consideration. Can you answer every single solitary question right now? No. But you're not voting tonight to issue bonds. You're voting for the project. And I want to compliment this county commission overall. Because you've had vision, you've looked out in the future, whether it's building schools or renovating schools or doing the kind of things we need in public safety. And now, we're talking about a court system. And we're talking about a court system that is going to serve the public for up to 50 years, right, gentlemen? 80 years. Now, let me tell you, our current courthouse is built in 1939. I'm responsible for the maintenance. It's a wreck. I'll go on record for saying that. It's falling apart. I mean, we do the best we can. But the only way to remedy the existing courthouse on the square, and it can be done, is to vacate it. It's full of asbestos, it's got other issues, it's got maintenance issues, it's got water line system that's ready to fail. You can't go in there and work on the courthouse without mitigating some of the problems. So, to say that we're wasting money as a county because we're investing in the future of Sumner County is not even close to being factual. I can't explain that to you. It's just not even relevant, the conversation. Because the reality is, you're being proactive by spending this money and actually reducing the cost to the taxpayers and it's a good value. Because eventually, that courthouse is going to have to be renovated on the square. We all know that. And the judges, just like the public, cannot keep using that facility because it's not only inadequate, it's becoming a maintenance issue. So, I strongly encourage you to vote for this. I think it's the right thing to do. I really believe that it's going to benefit the entire county, not just the city of Gallatin and all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Mr. Hinton?
Uh, I'd like to ask JPA a question if I might.
Yes, sir. Without objection, we'll let JPA, Mr. Thomas, come up.
We, we probably all believe that if we proceed on this, that probably in a couple of years, we'll be, well, the chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee has explained that we'll have adequate funding if we decide to take the next step. I mean, that's, that's common knowledge or whatever. If, if in fact, and there's always that potential, if in fact, there was a year's delay because of finance and because of whatever, what, what expenses, now, we've got people, we've got people that's working on this project, they're working on this project on a percentage basis. And, and they assume that we'll go from a starting point to a finish and we're gonna give you a certain percentage of the total cost of the project. If we, if we delayed, let's say two years from now, we said, we don't wanna, we don't want to take this next step because it, we've got some kind of problem that we don't foresee. We're not prophets. Some of us think we are, but we're not. What would be the cost incurred if, if we were to say to you, we're gonna put everything on hold for 12 months? We'd owe people, we would owe some money for work that people's done on a percentage basis?
I answer that first part and then, we don't think in terms of a percentage basis. We negotiated a fixed fee with the architects and it really was not so much on a percentage basis as it was based on our experience of what it takes to design a comparable sized courthouse in this region. If we were in a different region, you might charge something different, but this is what it should cost here. So, I don't pay much attention to percentages. The architects like to talk that way, I don't. I like to talk about the work. I wouldn't be too worried about what we'd have to pay the architects. Our, our problems would be as follows. First, we'd lose our design team to some extent because the, the continuity of design means that they're not assigned to other projects, they're assigned to this project. It's not disastrous, we could recover. If you, if you had to put the project on hold for a year, we'd work it out, we'd figure it out. Same thing with our construction manager, he'd go on and, and plan for building something else. Would we be able to get him back? Would we have to re-advertise and start over with a new CM? I don't know. I'm gonna assume that we could make that work. Your biggest issue, if you do have to delay the project for a year, and again, I am your consultant, I'll do anything you want me to do. If you need to delay it, we'll delay it, we'll figure it out, we'll problem solve it. But inflation at 3% of roughly 70 million dollars is 2 million dollars.
Yeah.
So, now our budget's not quite adequate and we'd probably have to come back and, and tell you to up our budget a little bit. I'd still need a contingency. I wouldn't want to go into this without a contingency. But now, the parking garage costs more, the courthouse costs more. I assume you'd find a way to pay for the jail pod or double pod in any case. You'd do that no matter what. But yeah, the courthouse would cost more and probably the parking garage as well. And now, it's possible you'd lose the city partnership. They might say, we just can't wait that long. I, I'm not saying that they would, but it seemed like I heard that tonight, so...
Well, we're, we're, we're kinda eating at a bite at the time. The two, the first two bites are the smallest ones and that is for the jail and, and the building, uh, the parking garage. Then the big, then the big part of the project, the expense, the major part of the expense will be stepping up next for approval to build.
And that was partly based on the line of trust as well, that as funds freed up, it coincides with the construction?
Yes. And, and when that issue comes up, there, we're talking about, we're talking about money, and I apologize for this, but we're talking about money tonight that's not gonna, this amount of money we're talking about tonight to do these two beginning things is not gonna automatically lock us into a tax increase. But when you start, when you start talking about 70 million, there'll be, it, it may not either, but there'll be a lot of conversations before we take the final big bite.
Yes.
Before it passes this body. And everything, everything needs to be talked about. Everybody, everybody needs to understand everything that's going on, even if you don't like it. Some of it you'll never like, but nobody needs to be left kinda hanging out there wondering what we're gonna do next and...
Well, that's one reason that we brought you this 91 million dollar package. I would like to be as straightforward with you as we can.
Sure.
Right from the outset, these are the steps, these are the timelines, these are the projected costs so that you know what you're investing in. We still have problems to solve. We still have to figure stuff out. I have to get my architects designing the parking garage. I, I have to get working on the transition space, but it's one step at a time or as you said, one bite at a time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Uh, Mr. Wright?
I have a question for...
Yes, sir.
JPA. We discussed at the break, I want to clarify and on record, the jail pods that you're speaking of, you said that, of course, the phase one and then the phase two. How many beds is that gonna give us?
Phase one, what we're recommending is two pods of 64 beds each. As you may know, 64 beds is the most that you can put in a single unit, whether it's single cells, double cells, dormitory, whatever.
Yes.
So, we're doing two of those for 128 beds. Phase two would get you another 128 beds. Whether we could afford to do phase two from the total 91 million dollars? If, if things broke really well, you free up some money from the parking garage by the city's contributions, it's possible, it's possible that you could look at doing two more pods within the next two to three years. If you need to kick it into phase two, then we would have to plan for that as a separate phase two expense. One thing that I didn't talk about, I talked about it in the last meeting and I probably should have talked about it again tonight, I think everybody remembers this, but we have a sort of a two-stage process here on the jail. Stage one was to get you some immediate relief, particularly to try to take care of the adult female and male juvenile problem that has been growing in the jail. And we noticed it immediately when we came on board two and a half years ago. This was something that needed to be fixed. But we were planning to do more with the jail in phase two. And the way we were gonna do that, the criminal courts and the general sessions courts are going to vacate the Criminal Justice Center once the new courthouse is built. When that happens, we have all that space that we can move the sheriff into. The sheriff's department is very overcrowded in their current space. The, the operating conditions there, I think, scored a three. It's very overcrowded. They're in the old jail. So, we moved the sheriff out of the old jail into the Criminal Justice Center. There's some conversion that has to take place. Those courtrooms have to be converted, offices, spaces have to be converted, but we can use that for the sheriff. Then, we free up what was the old jail for what could be new dormitory housing inside the secure envelope of the entire Criminal Justice facility. So, now you've added your 256 beds as outdoor pods and you can add beds in what is currently the sheriff's space. I can buy you time with this. Your jail was not really built to be expanded very well. It, it just wasn't. Well, I wasn't hired to even look at the jail in that regard. I was just hired to look at the site and to see if we could build a courthouse on that site. We thought we needed to look at the jail. And, and in doing that, we came up with a plan that had two steps. I think those steps are gonna buy you 10 or 15 years. You will get to a point where you've used up all of your available capacity, but that's for a future time, that is down the road. I'll not leave you in that fix on the courthouse. Once we build the courthouse, you're good for three generations. The jail, no, the jail didn't last very long at all.
So, we have, or undoubtedly, we're gonna build it, the new Judicial Center. We're gonna have the courts, but we also have to have somewhere to place these people. And I still talk to the people that I worked with when I first started, the people who work in corrections. They do it every day. We had an incident earlier this year on the north end of the county, in our district. One of the largest, something we don't want to be famous for. That young man probably should have been incarcerated. We have got to have the room if we're gonna sentence these people, we've got to have somewhere to put them. And we have to think about that too. This county, we want the growth, but we have to take what comes with that growth, which includes an uptick in crime. We've got to have somewhere to put these people, folks. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Again, our practice has been to give everybody one time through the queue before we go back. So, Mr. Taylor, I'll come back to you, but I'm gonna go to Mr. Tinsley first.
Okay. So, a couple of things that has been talked about and discussed that I want to hit on is, first of all, I think we have learned that Gallatin is willing to be a good partner with us in this project. They're not a piggy bank for us to just go to and ask for money. They're trying to partner with us. I don't want to overstep by saying that, but I think they have, they have shown their diligence in trying to help us achieve this parking garage. And I also want to go out and think that I, I doubt that this has slipped by the owners of the property right there on the square, that we are eyeing a parking garage for their backyard. And I feel like, especially since several of them are in this room, that they have not just completely missed this and that they are going to willingly be partners in this. And in business deals, you don't go and ask to take somebody or purchase or whatever somebody's property without having some plan on what you're doing. I wouldn't go and buy a random farm in Mississippi just because I'm, you know, in 20 years, I might do something with it. So, this is us saying that this is an idea. We're voting on an idea and a plan tonight, not a, we're not spending the whole 90 million dollars tonight. This is just a plan and an idea. And with that, I move to call the question.
Okay. All right. Mr. Tinsley has called the question. A green vote is, or a yes vote is to call the question.
Need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need a second. Sorry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ring. Sorry, Mr. Taylor. Thank you. A green, yeah, yes vote is to call the question to end debate and vote. A red vote, or excuse me, a no vote is to continue with debate.
Are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, you want to answer the question?
Two.
All right, the, call for the questions...
Two people in the queue.
Call for the questions on the board. Each minister, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote, anyone wish to change your vote? With 15 affirmative votes, call for the best and fails to get the two-thirds majority.
All right. Uh, Mr. Becker?
Appreciate that. I do have a few questions. Um, and...
Mr. Becker for, for JPA?
Um, maybe, just in general, some maybe, yeah, this is louder.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, maybe either for the, the first question is for General Ops Chairman or the Budget Chairman. At some point in the past, we, the commission approved the engineering and architecture fees for the courthouse planning. What, what was that amount? I don't, I don't recall.
It was the 5.7 million, it was included, the package we gave, it was a lot of...
Okay, so that's it.
Architectural engineering, there are fees and giving them money to negotiate and whatever.
Okay, so that's, that's the 5.7 million. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm, from my standpoint, I'm, I'm a simple person, right? My, my standpoint, once we approved that 5.7 million, whether I voted for or against it, doesn't really matter from what I'm saying here is, once that approved, the, the commission, from my standpoint, the commission approved the project to move forward. I mean, I don't know why we would vote to spend 5.7 million dollars on something and say, yeah, well, let's just not do that. Okay, so that's just a comment there. The next one, how much, how much money did we spend on the church swap? I remember 800,000 dollars, but what was, what was, so about 825,000? 865,000?
865, I think. 865.
Okay. So, in my simple mind, once we approved the 865,000 dollars to do a church, the church deal swap, to me, that, that's a, we're gonna do it right here. That like, said, this is the location that we're gonna build this. So, we did the 5.7 billion dollars saying, we're gonna do it. We did 865,000 dollars to say, we're gonna do it right here. So, in my mind, I'm a little, I don't say confused, but whatever, I'll say confused as to why some of the questions and debates happening tonight around these same questions. One thing that is confusing to me is, but I don't want to belabor it, is why were we able to negotiate with the church to swap the property, but yet we're not able to, without a plan, but we're not able to negotiate with the, the parking without a plan? Like, to me, I don't, I don't, I just don't understand why we were able to do one and not the other.
The, the parking deck was not in the original plan, Mr. Becker?
That's right. I remember that now. Okay. Um, the 2.26 cents tax rate that we, that the commission voted on a couple of months ago, I, I believe in the... a couple of months ago, I, I believe in the Budget Chairman, correct me please, that four cents of that amount was related to, basically, the first year was going to use it as cash, and then after one year, move that four cents over into, that serves, yeah, bond, or, yeah, which means more bonds. So there, I mean, that's, as has been alluded to, the, the tax rate of two-dollar-and-twenty-six cents was accounting for planning for this that we're talking about, so just throw that out there. One other question, and this may be for JDA or whoever wants to take it, I keep hearing Phase One, and I apologize that, I'm sure it's been talked about a lot, but what, what is, what's, if it's Phase One, I'm assuming there's a Phase Two? If it wasn't numbered.
I'm going to let, I'm going to let Mr. Thomas answer that one.
Uh, Phase Two is part of our original strategic plan. Uh, one of the things that we were asked to do was to find a use for the existing courthouse. Remember the Save the Courthouse movement? I think everybody remembers that. We recommended that it be used for the District Attorney General, who is in very, very poor space. But in order to renovate that building, as Mr. Holt was saying, first you have to vacate the building. So Phase Two involves what we do with the existing courthouse, once we've moved into the new courthouse, and then it has to do with what we do with your Criminal Justice Center, once the court moves out of the Criminal Justice Center. So Phase Two will occur down the road. You wouldn't really start, I, I, I don't really know. This is one of those questions that I ask myself, when do we start designing for Phase Two? My guess is we probably start sometime in 2021 or in 2022. So it's a couple of years away before you even start thinking about it in a serious way. But once you've moved out of the Criminal Justice Center, once you've moved out of your historic courthouse, you've moved into your new courthouse, now it's time to do something with those buildings. One of them gives the, the District Attorney General relief and provides the utilization for the building. The other one gives the sheriff's department and the jail some relief and provides a good utilization for that building. So this was a domino kind of plan, where every time we take something away to put it in a new building, we try to reuse what you've got in the most effective way that we can. We're really not leaving anything undone that we can think of that would still serve the taxpayer.
Yeah. And, and so was, thank you, was the, the original presentation, I don't know if it was two and a half years ago, whatever, however long ago, and the cost estimate, price tag, was that original and including a Phase One and Phase Two, or is that, was it always, have we always just looked at Phase One?
No, we, we looked at Phase One and Phase Two.
Okay.
And we gave you some real rough numbers, all the way back in twenty-seventeen or early twenty-eighteen. But by the time we get out to actually moving into the building in late twenty-twenty-two or early twenty-twenty-three, we're going to have to revisit those numbers. What we did was give you a budget to upfit, and we said, this is the most we're going to spend to upfit the historic courthouse. You could spend more, but this is what we're going to recommend.
Do you remember what that number was for Phase Two?
I've got it. Cliff, can you weigh your hands on that quickly?
Where's it? Eighteen.
Now, again, these numbers are old numbers, but it's all I've got right now. Uh, the historic courthouse renovation for the District Attorney, it's twenty-eight-thousand square feet. We established a budget of approximately eight million dollars. The sheriff's office expansion into the CJC, that was approximately twenty-nine-thousand square feet. We established a budget of five million dollars. And then the county jail expansion into the existing sheriff's space, what was the old jail, is about thirteen-thousand-five-hundred square feet, and we established a budget of approximately five million dollars for that. I remember in our last meeting where we had the combined gen ops and budget committee, I told you that was about eighteen million dollars, but be thinking of it right now as twenty million, because it's at least that. There's just too much time that's passing between the original planning and when you would actually start to implement that for me to be entirely comfortable with those numbers. And I'll have some help. I'll have a CMAR on board who can help us estimate some of those costs as well. But that's the best I can do for you right now. You've got a Phase Two. I would set some absolute top-end budget numbers for that and say, this is what we're going to spend on our renovation and no more.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I think that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Uh, Mr. Baker Ring, and then Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, sir. As several commissioners have said, we've been talking about this for two years. We've spent millions of dollars to prepare for this. This is something we need to do. I have heard people who oppose this, but nobody's come up with an alternative. We have to be talking about the safety of the people of Sumner County, the safety of the people who work in the court system. It is at risk under the current system. I've been in the county court, the old county courthouse multiple times over the years working with youth mock trial, and even my high school students who know no other courthouse will look at it and talk about how bad it is. When we went to our state, our regional meet competition in Clarksville, they, I mean, they, they couldn't believe their eyes that this, that Clarksville had a courthouse like they do in Montgomery County. This is very reminiscent of the Montgomery County courthouse. It's an amazing building, and this will be an amazing building, and I believe we have no alternative but, but to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I guess, I want, I want to thank everybody who's put hard work into this and, and thank the speakers tonight. Everybody had a lot of really good stuff to say. Just one thing, looking back through the original JPA, I guess, analysis that they had given, or initial report, one, one thing that was originally said was, our courts have adequate space, but it was just, basically, just kind of disorganized and not, I guess, it, it was too spaced out. And, you know, a lot of, there's a recurring theme tonight that came about a lot about convenience. Speakers mentioned convenience, convenience, you know, things that might only occur once or twice or three times a year, but it's just inconvenient. And, you know, part of what I feel my job is, as a county commissioner, is the fiduciary responsibility for taxpayers as well. And for me, it's what's convenient for them. And so, you know, I, I look at that, and then I look at, I asked a question back in March, when we were going over the, the parking lot issue, and I asked if this was going to trigger a tax increase. And at the time, I was told no. However, part of this property tax increase we did in August was for this plan that we're approving tonight and everything involved. Right now, it's about a hundred-and-twelve to a hundred-and-fifteen million dollars without, without any kind of interest, based on everything we're wanting to do and approving this plan. You know, and so I, I have a problem with that personally, you know, citizens that have reached out to me have a problem with that personally. The fact that when we say we don't have to raise taxes to do this, we've already done it. That's why we rose, raised taxes, is so that we would have the debt capacity to, to do this project in full and pay it in full, principal and interest. It's a lot of money.
Point of order, that's incorrect. The, the tax rate, as was set before the project, with the initial timeline.
Hit your, hit your button, Mr. Taylor.
The tax rate, as it was set beforehand, with the initial timeline that JPA said, debt capacity was there and it was fine. The additional tax increase was to move up the timeline to increase, and the reason being was the jail pods could not wait two years because of the overcrowding, and that the fact that the parking garage was initially set in Phase Two, it needed to be moved to Phase One for Gallatin to take part of it. I was very clear on it, and I think everybody else was, there was a tax increase to step up the timeline to include the jail pods, to address the overcrowding, and to include the parking garage. To say anything else is disingenuous on your part, sir.
Point of order. The school bonds came after the first JP.
Okay, now we're going to move on. School bonds have nothing to do with this, so.
It does, because he just addressed it.
No, move on. You had an order.
So.
Next point.
My point being is, this tax increase was for the court system, and.
You're out of order, Mr. Mansfield.
Well, I'm just going to say this. In my opinion, what we're approving here tonight, we're not taking into consideration a lot of other things that we've got on the docket, things that are happening in the county that are beyond our control. We have a new school system, new junior high school we're going to need to pay for in a couple of years. Had we not rushed this forward, raised taxes, part of this, for this, we could have waited four years and done it without a tax increase. We could have done a bond. We didn't choose to do that, we chose to rush the timeline. Citizens have a problem with that. I had a problem with it. I, I, and I'll just state the fact, I don't have a problem saying that. Citizens have said that to me. So, and, and I look around at things that are happening in other cities, and then we have representatives from Gallatin and Hendersonville that are here tonight, Alderman and City Councilmen. You know, they're doing a lot of things that are beyond our control. We have a massive development, twelve-hundred homes, retail, commercial coming, it's going to come before us, potentially, and that easily, easily can necessitate a property tax increase to, because we might have to build three more schools to, to service its entire area of max capacity. That, that's what I'm looking forward to in the planning in the future. I just don't think what we're doing tonight for convenience is, is convenient for the taxpayers. And that's just my opinion, and that's what the opinion has been stated to me by citizens that I've, I've talked to. And I disagree with some statements made by people tonight, talking about on the square, and everybody thinks it's great. I actually read comments, public comments on public sites from property owners in the square who, who don't want this to happen. So that's disingenuous to say, without a doubt, a hundred percent, everybody wants that on the square. That's not a true statement. I'm just thinking about the citizens of this, this county as well, and the people who don't benefit from this as well. I'm disappointed in how we've gone about this process personally, to do, raise taxes for it. And because of that, I'm just not going to be in support of it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. No one else in the queue? Let's vote.
The resolution's on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With twenty affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. We'll jump down, thank you, Michelle. I commend you for your work as General Ops Chair on this process. I know it's been lengthy and extensive, I appreciate your work. Legislative, or excuse me, Emergency Services Committee. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Krueger. Legislative Commissioner, or excuse me, Committee, Mr. Ring.
Yes, sir. Resolution nineteen-ten-oh-one is a resolution seeking a removal, removal of EPA vehicle testing requirements for Sumner and similarly situated counties, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Let me explain it, if I may.
Sure.
Briefly. Yes, we've done this before, but this is more targeted towards our congressmen and our members, and our senators to try to get them to assist us by moving, kicking some vital body parts that need to be kicked up in Washington.
Let me, let me add to that. After last month, Mr. Hinton called me, Mr. Hinton is the origin of this resolution. He called me and we discussed it, I think, in September, right before the September meeting. So after the September meeting, I wrote a letter as Chairman of the County Commission and sent it to our congressional delegation. Congressman Rose responded to me and asked for me to fill out a constituent service form, which I have done. If we pass this resolution tonight, then I will attach, when that resolution's drafted, I'll attach it to it, and we'll resend it to the congressional delegation, but also to Congressman Rose, because what we would like for do is for this to come off the bottom of a pile somewhere in DC and have action taken out. Since the state's already passed it, we've passed it, and we can give that relief to our citizens. Mr. Hinton.
I would tell you that both the senators' offices that I called said, oh, we won't do that here, that's up to the state. And I said, no, wait, wait, let's back up and start over here. This is not up to the state, it's already been, but, but it would, I don't think it would have ever moved. I think we'd all died still testing our cars.
They'll test our hearse as they're joining town.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Mansfield.
I, I just want to say thank you guys for doing this. This is awesome. I just really appreciate you guys supporting this. So thank you, Mr. Hinton.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Glad to do it. I think we can, I think we all agree on this one, but let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Maybe, maybe they heard that in Washington, I don't know.
Uh, thank you. Number, uh, resolution nineteen-ten-oh-two, a resolution adopting a pilot procedure for recording designated committee meetings in audiovisual format, so moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Tinsley. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the, the work and the effort that the Ad-Hoc Committee has done on this. I proposed this resolution based on feedback from my constituents and constituents all over the county. So this wasn't for Mo Taylor, or this wasn't for any other commissioner individually, this is for our constituents all over our county who possibly couldn't be at committee meetings, just like we can't be at certain times, who want to see those. But the only thing that, that I have issue with after I, the last meeting and I had a chance to think about it, you know, if you look up the definition of pilot in the dictionary, you'll get several different definitions. Of course, we know a pilot flies a plane. Well, when I think about it, I think about a TV show that, you know, a pilot TV show. Well, if it gets good ratings, it continues. If it doesn't get good ratings, it's canceled. So, you know, that word just doesn't stick in my craw very well. So I would like to amend it, to replace that with process.
Second. Motion to amend, to take out the word pilot from the resolution. Before we vote on that, let me ask a question to the other members of the Ad-Hoc Committee. Do any of you have a problem if we take the word pilot off?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Then we're going to vote on the amendment? Uh, Mr. Tinsley, did you want to speak on the amendment?
I would like to, yes.
Okay. And then Ms. Echols, I'll come to you next.
The committee spent a long time working over the wording for this, doing due diligence and making sure that we were spending the county's money very wisely. I think initially, this was budgeted at fifteen-thousand dollars. I think we're in under five-thousand dollars at this point. We had tossed around several, we spent, I, I think at length, two months and two very long meetings discussing the wording of this resolution, and the majority of the committee agreed to the wording of this resolution, along with Law Director, and I believe that we should move it forward in its committee-approved format, without the word pilot being removed. The word pilot is put in there to kind of give us a, a direction, if that, if that sounds correct, so that if, let's say we decide not to use the owl, we can remove the owl from that, try something else new. And I think we've done a very good job of making sure that this was good and fair for the entire county.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Ms. Echols, do you want to speak on the amendment of the main?
Main motion.
Okay. All right. So no one else in the queue to speak? So a yes vote on this amendment is to strike the word pilot from the resolution, a no vote is to keep the original language that passed through the Ad-Hoc Committee and through legislative. Yes.
The amendment is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote?
All right, we're on the main motion. I'm sorry.
Five affirmative votes, amendment fails to carry.
Okay, amendment fails. Ms. Echols, you have the floor.
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Let's vote.
Please turn my mic off.
The resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered. Anyone wishing to change your vote? It is unanimous.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Ring.
Thank you. Uh, resolution nineteen-ten-oh-three.
Resolution 191003, a resolution to petition the Tennessee Legislature for an amendment to Tennessee Code annotated 55-8-152D2, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Nipper. And if I remember correctly, this resolution addresses, there's a wonky little law about school zones, and we need this to put out some school zone signs. Correct. Okay. All right. So I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Financial management, Mr. Becker.
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Budget committee, Commissioner Chris Taylor.
All right. Bearing in mind that the next two resolutions are a combination, the four, the four cents was not enough money to do the jail pods and the preliminary part of the parking garage, so we had to pull from other services. What we're doing on the first one, 1910-04 is appropriating $3,487,522 to transfer to capital projects fund for additional jail modules. This is the beginning of the money for it, and we're having to pull from other places too, between the two resolutions. I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Shell. Commissioner Mo Taylor, you're in the queue.
Yes, sir, and I went through a lot of the budget process and know a lot of the budget process, and I'm not, I'm not being negative towards any of that. The only thing in my opinion is how we moved this money around and everything negatively affected my district.
Okay.
And that being the process of, over the last, I don't know how many years, we have allocated a certain amount of money for water, and we approved a resolution for water. Everybody wants water, everybody needs water. So we, there was no funding, funding was eliminated in this budget process for water lines. So anything that was already approved is still in the budget, the grant that we applied for, but anything to add to that, or anything else, there's no money there because our budget, from my understanding, going to the last budget meeting, our, our capital projects budget is extremely tight this year. So, once again, not being negative, but it is what it is, and what happened is what happened, and it negatively impacts my district.
Okay.
And not only my district, other districts that, that are fighting for access to clean, safe drinking water.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Graves.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to concur with the commissioner about, this was a process been going on for a long time. I've been working on it through this commission and, and through the utility districts and our utility district per se. And now we always, already just yanked it out, and it probably don't have anything to do with this, but we did. We approved this tonight, this resolution, in good faith. And now, in good faith, next month, I think we ought to have something to, for water lines on that, on this agenda for next month, Mr. Chairman. It's just a comment, because we got people up in this county, in Sumner County, that drinks water out of a pond or a creek. I've been there, I've seen them. It's still there in some cases. We spent, in our utility district, we spent several million dollars of, of our own money to provide safe drinking water. And we have also, and I appreciate what this commission and prior commissions have done for that process, but I just want to put that on record saying what I believe.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graves. Commissioner Taylor.
I just wanted to clarify one point. It wasn't necessarily in the budget ever. What we've done for the previous three years was when we got towards the end of the year, looking at the next year, David's group does a fantastic job pulling out savings from different areas, and each year we had enough in savings to cover the $150,000 that we were using for the water lines. I did speak with Commissioner Taylor earlier this year about it, if we wanted to add it in taxes, and he didn't at that time. But it's not something we've necessarily ever had as a budget line item. We've just always managed to pull money for it, and this year there wasn't the money to pull for it. And obviously, it's something we can look at again next year, and I would suggest if somebody wants to bring it up in budget, we'd be glad to entertain that. But it's not something that we've ever necessarily made a line item. It was just extra money we found each year for it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yeah, not to be argumentative or anything like that, but the actuality of it is that myself, former Commissioner Aitkins and, and the, the senior commissioner from the third district had done the, through the budget process in February of making the request and emailing it to the, the finance director, and I think you'll recall, $400,000 over the last three or four budget cycles. We didn't, and that was done again this year, and it was initially included and then taken out during the process, or never included in the process. So not, not to mince words or anything, but that's what it's been. And last year, in all actuality, since my brain just kicked in a little bit there, Commissioner, former Commissioner Pomeroy told me that this would be in here next year. He said, if it's not, Mo, you call me and I'll come, I'll come talk about it. And that was actually said during the last, last year's budget for the 18, 19 year.
Well, I think it's something we address on, I mean, many of us on this commission have voted for water lines in the northern part of the county every time we've had the opportunity to, so I think we can bring it up again as it's, as it's needed. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution's on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 22 affirmative votes, resolution is approved. First and final reading.
Commissioner Taylor.
This is the second portion of it, 1910-05, appropriating $6,717,92 within capital projects fund for the new justice center planning out. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Shell. That's Commissioner Chris Taylor. Mr. Becker, you're in the queue.
All right. Thank you. Looking on, looking in the agenda on this resolution, there's one line item that's being transferred for is for the jail modules of $5 million, which lines up with the costs of those jail modules. I guess that, that prompts a question on the previous resolution, and I should have asked it then, 191004, what, that says it's for the additional jail modules, so is this, is the additional jail modules the 3.487 plus the 5 million? Is that, is my question make sense?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Becker, the first one was to transfer the reserves from the debt service fund to pay the $5 million. If you look on the resolution at the, the left side, the funding source for the $3,487,522 is the same money coming out of the debt service. You have to budget it coming out of the debt service and going into the capital projects fund. So it is the same funds.
So the 3 point, okay, 3.487 is, is a subset, if you will, of the 6.7 that we're talking about here?
Yes, sir, it's part of the funding.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. No one else in the queue? Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 20 affirmative votes, resolution is approved on first and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Taylor.
1910-06 is appropriating up to $8,247 from county general fund unassigned fund balance for the sound system replacement for Judge Gay's courtroom. His courtroom is the one that was having issues with the microphone bleeding over from another area of the courthouse, and that really doesn't work well for court, apparently. They looked at it and figured out better than just replacing the microphones, they need to replace actually his system, which is where the $8,000 came from. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yes, sir, and I will attest that he needs this, because I attended a court hearing in his court the other day, and it was extremely hard to hear, so I can attest that he definitely needs this. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
1910-07, this is carryover purchase orders from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2020 for the county funds. It's where things that haven't spent get pulled over for the next year. We usually do this in July, but we didn't pass the budget till a little bit later, so that took time. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Goode.
I won't touch anything, Mr. Kemp.
Don't touch that button. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
All right. Appropriating 89, oh, I'm sorry, 1910-08, appropriating $89,901.65 as pass-through funds for state inmate medical reimbursements to the budget of the sheriff's office. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Foster. See no one in the queue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
1910-09, appropriating $7,500 from the general fund unassigned fund balance for installing Google Chrome in Citrix environment for the sheriff's office. This is going to help them implement our Cronus system and time counting. Thank you. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Nipper. Mr. Mansfield.
Just a quick question that a citizen asked me, I guess, so it costs $7,500 to put Google Chrome on this system?
They use an older form of Microsoft Windows that is not necessarily supported by Microsoft right now, but because of their interface with the TBI and everything else, they're not prepared to move forward with changing those systems yet. For Google Chrome to work on that, they have to, Citrix has to come in and reset everything because it doesn't necessarily line up with the operating system they have. Although, so Microsoft Windows, it's an older version, so this is the only way to kind of-
This is Citrix consulting fee, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. No one else in the queue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
1910-10, appropriating $34,283 from county general unassigned fund balance for flooring